The business and get some things accomplished here. I, the agenda was sent out to everybody. Is there commissioners, is there anything that you would like to add to the agenda for tonight? That isn't already on it?
Not for me.
Okay, hearing no one again, thanks you to all commissioners for, for going through this process and being here tonight. First thing, first item on the agenda is our roll call, call to order and roll call. That's me. I'm, I'm hearing me again.
Why is that? Because I had the stream link open in a tab, we'll close that out.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, sound off?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's odd, I'm hearing an echo and I'm not sure why, I'll see if I can figure that out here.
Okay, so for, for the record, Jim Figurski is here. Terry Shepherd. Robin Vora and Jerry Sebastian.
Are there any of the commissioners, if you can hear us but can't get contact and I don't know, you know, send off a skyrocket or something like that, I have no idea.
Or email me or something.
Something, let us know, try to get through to us somehow that you're on, but you're not getting through. Okay, all right, so the second order of business then is approval of minutes, the June, June draft minutes. Any questions or changes for, for the, for the June minutes? Okay, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion. To approve the June minutes.
This is Jim Figurski, I'm moved to approve.
Do I hear a second, it's been moved to approve the June minutes? Do I hear a second?
Second?
Robin's just doing a twirly thingy, there's something wrong with Robin's connection.
Okay. So Terry, seconded it? She did.
Terry, did, did, Terry, did you second him?
Yeah, yeah, I seconded the approval.
Okay. Ms. Shelton, again, Robin is just, I looking at his face, he's not moving and the little circles going around and around and around.
Yeah, I'm seeing low bandwidth indicators on a couple attendees, I think we're getting this all across the city here. So we're gonna have some issues with video most likely.
So if, if this goes, we could basically undo the videos for this meeting and that might help too, right, Will?
Sorry, I cut out for a second, what was that?
Okay, well, if we get, if we turn off our video feed, will that help?
It, it may help, yeah.
Okay, let's just do that for now. Thank you.
Okay. Videos are off, videos are off, now I can't see anybody. Okay, so, all right, so then, uh, let me run through there, then every, all those in favor of accepting the motion for the June minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I'm still getting Jim doing circles here.
You mean, um, Robin?
No, Jim, Jim Figurski is doing circles.
Okay.
Okay, Robin, I think I got, Robin, do I have you now? Robin, are you there? Robin? Jim, are you there?
I am still here, you know, I was having video problems at the beginning, so.
Okay, so we, we got the videos off.
Yeah.
Terry, are you still with us?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
I wonder, Heidi, I wonder if for the commissioners, we should have them call in the attendee phone number, not the public, but the attendee phone number if we're not gonna do video. And then they might be connected not through their computer internet, but through their cellphone or landline.
Will that help, Will, do you think?
No, I don't think that'll help and it'll actually make it tougher for me to do my job. The audio should stay solid. I think it was, it was just Robin, I may have dropped off here.
Okay, all right.
Do I have Robin back?
I don't.
Okay.
We do have three, for sure, Jim, Terry and Jerry, so.
All right. Then I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public comment, is there anybody listening in on this who would like to make a public comment about any topic or any item that is not on the agenda?
Uh, yes, I would like to.
Okay, and then go ahead and state your name and Heidi, can you get all of this down without seeing the person?
Correct, I can, as long as they speak slowly and clearly.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Nancy Gould, I sent in an email this afternoon to Heidi. I don't know if it got forwarded to the commissioner, I am concerned about 606 Northwest Congress Street, which is the Putnam House. Which is in the Drake Park Historic District. The property was acquired last year and moved into the family's trust last year and it has a lockbox on the front door of the house and there's no irrigation system operating this summer. So of concern to me is the mature landscaping on the historic property. And I'm wondering what the Landmarks Commission can do to contact the property owners and encourage them to turn on the sprinkler system that is at the site. Since we had a very dry winter and we're in a drought declaration, that basically means that the native plants are really struggling this year. And when traditional landscaping gets turned off from irrigation, that really shocks plants. So I'm referring to some really nice lilacs that are on the property and some ponderosa trees that are on the property.
Okay.
I can track down, I can track down the owners and ask them to put on the irrigation and maintain their property.
That would be super, I just hate to see intentional neglect going on because it kind of spirals. And I don't know that to be the case, but they're out of town owners and so they might not be hip to what's really going on on their land. So I'd appreciate whatever you guys can do, it's an important property. And the landscaping is a really important part in my view on historic districts.
And I will reach out to the owners and ask them, yeah, I will reach out to the owners and ask them, yeah.
Okay, great, and, and you got that address again, Heidi?
If, Ms. Gould?
Northeast corner of Congress and Kansas, it's the George Putnam Home, the fellow who started the Ben Bulletin.
Yep, just the most famous property in town.
Yes, it is. Yeah, yeah, okay, and so then Heidi, you go ahead and contact, either contact the owners or if there's no response, if there's no response, I mean, what, at what point does Kansas City step in, nuisance complaint go in or something like that?
Well, let's see if I just reach out to them if they will just immediately take care of situation and then if not, I can talk to our code enforcement department.
That's great.
What we have as options.
Okay, Ms. Gould, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you bet, is there anyone else out there who wants to make a comment on any item?
Real quick, I'll interject here, if you're a call in user, if you want to alert us for a comment, you can press star three on your phone. And that will alert me and then I can unmute you, you will hear two beeps and then you can speak.
Thank you, Will, for doing that, the Commissioner Robin Vora sent me an email, he says he can hear us on the phone. Um, not the computer, but he can't speak, so I don't know if you want to just unmute him for the entire meeting or if that's possible, Robin Vora, and his number is 598-4143.
Got him, okay, I'll move him in.
Okay.
Is this Robin?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, very good, very good, very good, okay, Robin, my question is that you were able to hear us and what's going on and everything like that, you just couldn't communicate back to us?
I could hear you, but you couldn't hear me.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so you're, you're still on board with where we're at on the agenda and where we're heading?
Yeah, you're taking public comment.
We took public comment, um, I think I just called to see if there were any others, any other public comment?
I didn't see any hand raised, so I'll go ahead and just identify these last two callers here real fast.
Okay.
Okay, we have a second caller with number 541420, uh, were you calling in to make public comment?
Okay, thank you, state your name and your comment.
Nope, nothing there, I'll go to the next one.
Okay.
Caller starting with 541771, were you calling in to make public comment? Nothing there. Then we also just got a new caller or user on headset, John Shimoller. Hello, John, are you, uh, calling in to make public comment?
John is with St. Francis, this is Kevin Link.
Oh, okay.
Okay, private hearing later, okay.
Applicant, yep.
Yeah, they have, they have the project out for us, thank you very much.
Great, I'll just put you on mute and then we'll bring you back in when it's time.
Okay, all right, so then that, that pretty much takes care of our public comment. And for our agenda, we go down to item number three, public hearing, PZ 20 dash 0382. Okay, and this is a property at 336 Northwest Sizemore Street, uh, going to, well, going to tear down front porch and rear addition and put up new front porch and new rear addition. Okay, all right, before we get to, uh, get going, uh, and, and start with the hearing, I need to read the preliminary statement of, in all public hearings. This is a de novo hearing and is an initial evidentiary hearing of application number PZ 20 dash 0382. The app, this application is a request for a teardown of a porch and an addition and a construction of a new porch and new front porch and a new rear addition to the dwelling. The applicant has the burden of proving that he or she is entitled to the approval sought. The applicant, applicable criteria for this application include the Bend Urban Area Comprehensive Plan Chapter 3 and Chapter 10.20, 20 of Historic Preservation Code and the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties. Testimony and evidence at this hearing must be directed toward the criteria set forth in the staff report or other criteria in the Bend General Plan or Bend Development Code that you believe is applicable for any other crit, or any other criteria in the National Register of Historic Places Program that any person believes apply to this decision. Failure on the part of any person to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford to this proceeding, an opportunity to respond, issue precludes appeal.
Somebody has a secondary device here, I'm trying to stop that, I think that's Robin, I'm gonna kick Robin out of the, uh, actual conference and just keep him on the phone.
Okay, all right. Additionally, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow Landmarks Commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Order of the presentation, the hearing will be conducted in the following order, staff will give a report. The applicant will then have an opportunity to offer testimony and evidence. Proponents of the application will then be given a chance to testify and present evidence. When all proponents have testified, opponents to the appeal will then be, uh, given a chance to testify and present evidence. After both proponents and opponents have testified, the applicants will be allowed to present rebuttal testimony, but may, may not present new evidence. At the Landmarks Commission's discretion, if the proponents presented new evidence on rebuttal, opponents may be recognized for a rebuttal presentation. At the conclusion of this hearing, the staff will be afforded an opportunity to make any closing comments. The commission may limit the time period for presentations. Continuances before the close of the hearing, any person has the right to request an opportunity to present additional evidence, argument or testimony regarding the application. If the hearing is continued or the record left open, the applicant shall also be allowed to, at least seven days after the record is closed, to all other parties to submit final written arguments, but no new evidence in support of the application. Contacts or biases, do any of the commissioners have any ex parte contacts? Prior hearing, observations, biases or conflicts of interest to declare in this application? If so, please state the nature and extent of those. Commissioners, anybody?
No.
No.
Does any party?
Also, there's also Robin Vora, I know he's muted because he has some back feed going.
Can you hear me on the phone?
Yeah, we can hear you, yeah, Robin's not muted, I, he was just in the meeting twice, I had to kick one out.
Okay, yeah. So I could hear you on the phone, but the, um, and, and I was actually just trying to pick you up in the computer, I was gonna turn off the phone, but you kind of disconnected me, but no, no conflicts. I missed a roll call, I was fiddling, you know, trying to get sound then. I, I, I assume, I assume we have a quorum of, um.
Yeah, yeah, we do, yeah, we do, we have four, four commissioners.
Okay, and I guess you, you'll have to turn on the video again for me if you, if you're gonna have any materials displayed on the video.
I don't know how we're gonna do it if we're gonna need to take a look at the visuals.
Yeah, that's gonna be tricky, Robin, if you were getting us, um, figured out on the, the computer, you can join back in on the computer, but we'll need you to mute the volume on there.
Yeah, I can, um, I could figure, try and look to see how to do that, I can find off the phone for a bit and see if I can just get on the computer.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
To continue, does any party, uh, wish to challenge any commissioner based on ex parte contacts, biases or conflicts of interest?
And that would be Gary Hallbrook, who is muted at this moment, but he is the representative for the applicant.
Okay, and so did anything, do we want to unmute him and see if he has any conflicts or any?
Yes, please, Will, could you, thank you.
Yes, yeah, Gary, you can speak.
Yes, we have no conflicts right now.
Okay, thank you very much, Gary. Thank you, Mr. Holbrook, okay, so then what we're going to do is we'll go ahead and open this evidentiary hearing, this evidentiary meeting and with, uh, Ms. Kennedy, uh, a presentation from staff, thank you.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Heidi Kennedy, I'm the staff planner for this application, which is, um, involving a piece of property at 336 Sizemore Street. The file number is PZ 20 dash 0382. Specifically, their request is to remove the dwelling's front porch and a rear addition. The proposal also includes a request to construct a new front porch and a new rear addition on the dwelling. The criteria that staff used to review this request were the Bend Chapter 10.20 Historic Preservation Code and Chapter 4.1 of the Bend Development Code, the Development Review Procedures. This is a, by the National Historic Nomination Information, it's a historic non-contributing home. It's been heavily altered over the years, um, in the eighties, if, if you, I go into detail about that in the staff report. And after reviewing all the applicable criteria for additions and remodel, it was staff's recommendation, which is listed on page 14 of the staff report, that the proposal as submitted get approved, it's, um, it's recommendation for approval with several conditions. Two conditions, which is our standard, um, the applicant submit a standard details checklist to the planning division for review approval before and with their building permit for the proposed changes and prior to doing any exterior changes or remodeling. And that, um, the number second, the second, uh, condition is that the applicant apply for a variance to the front yard setback standard for the planning division for the proposed new front porch that encroaches into the front yard setback area prior to the issues of any building permit for the alterations. This, this little house is pretty close to the front property line right now and they're proposing to take off the front porch and put a new one on that's not quite as encroaching into the setback as existing one. But if you're familiar with this area, there's about three or four of them right in a row that are very close to the front, um, front property line and their request for a variance, I think is, um, meets all the criteria for the development, uh, the Landmarks Code and is staff recommendation for approval. Mr. Hallbrook is here representing the applicant and I have uploaded to the shared drive all of the plans that were part of the application and their burden of proof and, uh, detailed material information that they supplied in their application. So once the applicant is, is making their presentation, I can pull up any drawings, Mr. Hallbrook, that you'd like to refer to as part of the, um, presentation, and that's all I have at this point.
Thank you very much. We'll hold questions for you until after Mr. Holbrook has made his presentation.
Okay.
And, and that's commissioners, unless you have a burning question for Ms. Kennedy right now. Okay, Mr. Holbrook, and I think you can go ahead and start making your presentation at the, at this time.
Yes, thank you, um, and we don't really have a lot more to present beyond, you know, what, what has been submitted so far. We, we would like to stress that the house has been modified over the years quite a bit, to the point where it is non-conforming and really not contributing to the neighborhood in, in any way that, um, is consistent with the historical character and our, our intent, our dual intents really are to improve that character so that it is contributing and also make the house more livable than it is right now. The, uh, the homeowners themselves, you know, it has been a rental for a long time, but their, their plan is to remodel the house so that they would move back into it and be a part of the community, which I think is, you know, what we all really want here. Detail wise, our, our goal is to remove a lot of the, uh, the non-compliant, uh, materials, which is pretty much everything on the house and replace it and actually allude to the original design of the house so that, uh, we are kind of bringing back not only the, the character of the neighborhood, but also some of the history of the house itself. And, you know, it's, like I said, we have a pretty simple presentation on this, so I would open it up to any questions.
Uh, are there commissioners' questions for Mr. Holbrook? I've got a couple, I've got a couple, I had, I had some confusion when I started reading about new siding. The main part of the house will get new siding as well as the addition. And that will all be ship, was ship lap siding, is that true, is that correct?
Yes, it'll all be consistent, yes.
It will all be consistent, um, I don't completely remember the, the variance request for, um, property line, but right now the house is what, too close, it's within the 10 feet or something?
And the, the, the front of the house is actually sitting right, um, on the, the setback. What is it, the, the 10 foot setback, so the, the entire front porch is within the setback. And the south side of the house, uh, is actually one foot into the five foot setback. Which is why the, the addition that we're adding, we stepped that back a foot to, to comply with that setback. But we're leaving the existing original part of the house, you know, is non-compliant, so that's, that's the bulk of our variance on this.
Okay, and then, um, but you'll still, you'll still be within the setback with the new porch even with moving it back a little bit?
Yeah, we will be, um, you know, like I said, the, the front wall of the house itself, the enclosure is right on the setback, so anything we do on the front, uh, really encroaches into the setback. And it's, it is very similar to, um, definitely the house just to the north has the exact same situation. The house to the south has a, a much more minor stoop, but it does also encroach into the setback.
When I looked at, I, I, when I looked through the, the drawings and elevations and those, and the, um, materials that you had submitted, the addition looks, um, tall, looks big to me, is it? Is it taller than the, than the original house?
It is the same height, so we're using the same floor, finished floor height and the same eve height, but we're using a lower sloped roof to keep the, the ridge of the roof below the existing ridge. Just slightly below it.
All right, so it is just slightly below that, all right?
Right.
And I, I did not drive by there, usually I do, but, um, the orientation of the, of the house, okay? Can you tell me which sides face which streets?
Yeah, so the western side of the house, which is the front, faces Sizemore, so it's the main frontage.
Okay, got it, all right. And then my concern is that when I looked at, again, at the elevations, one of the elevations, and I can't remember which one of them, must be the opposite of the front. Looked fairly large, it looked like it had a massing problem. Can we boot those elevations up and take a look at them for half a second?
I'll go put them up, hold on.
Okay, thank you very much. Siding, I got that question answered, uh, let's see, what else did I have? Oh, I just out of curiosity, what was the foundation of the original house?
Um, you know, the original house, I believe, was lava rock. It was replaced with CMU at one point, that was one of the, the historic pictures that we had was the, the, during the CMU replacement.
Can you see the elevation drawings?
I can see, I put my glasses on, I'll see better, I can see.
Yeah, I'll help you with that.
I can see site elevation south. The front is in the west elevation, the back is in the east elevation and the north side elevation, okay, all right. I'm assuming that on the, the south side, the side, that elevation, you've got the bank of windows, you just put something in my, in the way, there you go. You got the bank of windows and then you've got the smaller one, I'm assuming that there's a bathroom in there or something like that, that, why there's not a window in there?
Oh, in the, where, where the house steps back, yes, that is a bathroom window, yes.
That is a bathroom window and so then there's that more of, yeah, I see more of the wall of the house in between those, that small window and then the banks of windows. Okay?
Yeah.
I can see, I can see the, coming up the roof, so that's why I figured it's gotta be a bathroom in there or something like that.
It's, it's actually a shower.
It is, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And as I look at the, the back elevation, the east elevation. Okay, and I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the original part of the house. And then in the background there is the addition. Now I'm really confused.
Most, most of what you see in the back elevation is the addition, I mean, you can see the roof of the existing, but yeah, for the most part, you're seeing the addition.
Of the existing, but then, but then I'm looking at the addition and you certainly are below the height of the original house.
Yes.
Good, 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 and the windows then are, what's the material that the windows will be made out of, wood, I hope?
Uh, yes, we're planning on aluminum clad wood.
Aluminum clad wood, uh-huh, and let's see, um, you're replacing windows in the main part of the house as well?
Yes, we're, we're planning on replacing all the windows because the, the existing windows are aluminum and some of them aren't even, uh, thermally broken, you know, they're just single pane, not great windows. So the goal is to replace all of the existing windows as much as we can. But the, some of the higher windows, we were actually gonna keep the same shape and size.
You're going to keep them the same shape and size, like up in the, the attic area, what would be an attic area?
In, yeah, in the gable, yes.
Gable, right, got it, all right. Okay, and then also I saw in there in the landscaping report that there's a, what is it, a spruce, an Engelmann spruce or something like that?
Yes, beautiful one.
A great big one, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Concerned about protecting it and making sure that it. Concerned about protecting it, making sure that it led through the remodel and the rebuild. And you did have, I I thought I saw an arborist, you're working with an arborist on that?
Yeah, Chris Madison suggested that we step back the foundation. Right at the tree roots so that we wouldn't encroach too much on the roots and damage them. And that's what we're planning on doing.
And I saw that, that you've got the foundation comes out and then you've got like a camel lever? Something like that over the foundation where you're going to go ahead and put the, what is it, the porch over there or something like that?
No, it's, well, it's the camel lever happens right under where the the main bedroom is. And it from the from the eye, it's just going to look like the house extending with, you know, no, no concrete. Stem wall there.
To protect the root system of the spruce? Is that correct?
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, they spruce especially have a really shallow root system. So that that was great. I was pleased to see that. But related to the landscaping, I I had a question, what tree you were planning to remove from the back?
Yeah, there was a small tree and, you know, off the top of my head, I'm not remembering what kind of tree it was. But it's back near that storage shed in the back part of the yard. And it had, it was planted a little too close. To the storage shed and it's it's kind of growing away from it and it's it's withering quite a bit. So the the arborist suggested that it probably needed to go.
This is Jim, because I believe in the report, it was identified as a Siberian elm. I'm not sure that's exactly what it is, but. That, you know, it looked like a multi trunk, either that or a bunch of suckers off of a trunk that was there. So. I did have one further question on that same issue of the step back footing. I'm looking at the diagram on page seven of the staff report. And I am, it shows the new concrete stem wall setback about three feet from the building face. And it looks like to the center line of the tree trunk, it's only another three feet. I'm wanting, on that diagram, where does the current foundation? Wall sit in relationship?
The, so we're stepping back this foundation three feet from our our one foot step back from the setback line. Yeah, so from the original house, it's actually four feet back.
Okay, yeah, good. You know, given the canopy of the that spruce, I mean. Depending upon where the original foundation was, that those roots would have extended much further. It sounds like by backing away, I mean, if the if the existing foundation is right up against the tree. You're probably not going to encounter too many roots in moving that back. You might need to be careful in the demo of the existing foundation. And it might be worthwhile having the arborist on site when that demo is done.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
You know, something is, one of the, well, I'll I'll come back to that later. I'm sorry, I jumped the gun on that. Mr. Hallbrook, anything else you would like to add?
Um, not really. I mean, we're we're just excited to to get this started.
Commissioners, do you have any more questions for Mr. Hallbrook?
Uh, this is Robin. Can you hear me now? Okay, uh, this is more maybe a question for Heidi. I didn't get a chance to ask her at the end of hers. First of all, there are other, from what I gather, there are other historical homes that venture to that front setback that are closer than 10 feet. Is that correct?
That is correct. That there's a little row basically. Of homes that are all encroaching into that setback, that they're on between the two streets on the north and south, basically. Yeah.
Okay, and then the second question. In in that case, is the question of the the setback more of a one for the planning commission? Rather than the historical landmarks commission?
Um, I think that that there they. Need to go through a variance request through the planning division, and we mostly do them administratively. And so if the if the commission is supportive of recommending approval, then that could be part of their application. To applying for their variance request to the front setback. And I would support that. I think in this particular situation with the row of homes, it's very appropriate that that where they're proposing it to be.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, this is Terry. One last question related to landscaping. I saw in the report that it talks about no major landscaping changes are proposed, but it didn't talk about any additions. I'm assuming since you're adding a front porch. Any plans to add traditional landscaping back in in front of the new porch or fencing?
Um, their their plan really is to keep it as native as possible. You know, the the new porch isn't quite as deep as the existing porch, so there's going to be a little bit more area. Currently, there's not much. There's there's, I don't know, about a foot and a half of depth there. So, you know, the the owners really just want to keep it pretty native and consistent with the neighborhood. They're they're not trying to do anything decorative up there.
Any other questions then? Alright. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hallbrook. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this proposal, this project? Hearing anybody? Okay, then we'll move on. Is there anyone out there who would like to speak? Against or oppose this project? No?
I see two attendees with their hands raised.
Oh, yes. Yep, caller 541420, I'll unmute you and you'll hear a couple beeps and he can go ahead and speak. Hello?
Hello?
Yep, we got you.
This is Nunzi Gould in regards to the application on size more. I did notice they're proposing two by tens as the roof members for the new front porch. And that just seems to be a ginormous scale compared to the scale of this dwelling. I'm not quite understanding why they're needing the variance on this. Other than to justify. Maybe the new addition. Well, why wouldn't they just rebuild the front porch?
And then it's going to be a brand new one.
Well, I understand that, but isn't the goal to be rehabilitating, not just tearing down these assets? So, one of the concerns I have is they're putting in these huge, a two by ten is a big, is a big piece of wood. That's like a really contemporary look. It's not in keeping with the scale of the building whatsoever. So part of that is, that will be your new front image that you see from the street. That every Tom, Dick and Harry in the neighborhood who has a single story dwelling is going to want to repeat. And I think landmarks needs to be mindful about what this precedent would set for those homes that are, you know, property tight. So the neighborhood has a variety of homes and ages. From what I'm understanding, the the owner's family has owned this building since at least 1987, maybe prior to that even. So. I don't know if they might have also been involved in rehabilitations when it became shingled. I'm also concerned about the CMU. Foundation as being a precedent and also the. Concrete siding materials. As being the product that's used. So the scale, unmasking of the front porch. And then regarding the tree at the back. Typically, you want your foundation outside the drip line of the branches of the tree. And in the cutaway that I saw, the building is very close to the tree. So. The other thing that's very different with today's codes is you have to excavate down at least 18 inches to get to your footing of your new dwelling. And that differs dramatically from previously built homes, which means there's going to be a lot of soil removed from the top of the. You know, the covering of that tree. So I am a tree advocate, as you can gauge. And I just think that the proximity to the tree. Is something that landmarks needs to either have scrutiny eyes on. And that doesn't mean after the roots are cut, it means when the backhoe is there. And then bagging and wetting roots and giving. Clean pruning to any root fingerlings and keeping things moist during the time. Of construction, those are all super critical to. Preserving trees, especially when you're throwing in new concrete, which is one of the first things that the trees are going to want to suck up. So that's kind of my commentary. I don't know if you guys have had. Have gone back through historical records to learn more than what was put in in the national register nomination. Which very often was just super cursory. So I don't know if you've gone back through. Tax record photographs that. The assessor's office may have had, or if you've gone back. Through any bulletin news articles or even gone back to the owners to ask what the photos might have looked like just as recent as 1987.
Can can I recap your concerns here real quick? You had the the front porch, instead of a demolition, a and a rebuild, tried to rehab that front porch? What was the other one? Something about the?
And that's to avoid the massive scale of two by tens of what's proposed for the new front porch.
And then the two by ten and the massive scaling. Okay.
Right. Proximity to the tree in the back.
And now, are you talking about the spruce or the one that's out, the the other one we're, the the other one we were talking about?
I'm not talking about the one by the shed.
Okay, so we're talking about the being a lot of TLC on that Engelmann spruce that's right by the, right by the new construction?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so your concern is the spruce tree? Okay, and I thought I heard one more that I missed.
The CMU footing that they're trying to put in. So I'd love to see an old house that has CMU in this vintage as an example.
Mr. Hallbrook, I'm going to give you a minute to go ahead and.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. Okay, I think I've got the idea of of your opposition. I would like, I would like to bring Mr. Hallbrook back to go ahead and address those issues.
Yeah, I think there was, sorry, there just, there was one more on the on the siding, the cement board siding.
Oh, okay, the cement board siding. Thank you.
Also, there is one more person with their hand raised that has.
Comments as well, and this should be a comment in opposition.
I don't know. It's somebody's raised their hand.
Okay, Will, can you bring them on board?
There was a second hand raise. I only see the one now and that's who we were just speaking to.
Oh, okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Okay, so Mr. Hallbrook, would you like to address some of those issues?
Yes, I would. The. I guess the first one I'll address is the foundation because the the CMU foundation is actually the existing house. We are not. Proposing doing CMU foundation on the new house. It will be cast in place concrete. And you might have noticed from the drawings that we where we are taking off. An addition that was done years ago and replacing it with a new addition, all of that, it's a very clean cut. We will be adding a. Cast in place concrete foundation, so stem walls and footings from there. The the siding, I'm not sure exactly how to address. I mean, it's, it is consistent with other. Recent remodels in the neighborhood. You know, it is, it does have that that ship lap wood look to it while also being fire resistant and, you know, certainly a more. Contemporary material, but it does have that historic look to it. And that's the goal here is to just, you know, meet both of those requirements. The, kind of looking at my list here. The the step back at the tree. Yeah, we're, and that's one of the reasons we have the arborist involved, who will be involved throughout this project is to guide us on if there are issues. You know, the goal is to, we do lay out the foundation to address. Any of his concerns and have him out there to to look at it. Currently, the existing house doesn't really go right up to that tree. There is a a wooden deck. That extends out to that point. So we're a little concerned about how much the tree has grown. Below the surface of the earth because we, you know, without digging, we really don't know. But if we start running into anything major. We, at that point, just might have to readdress it. And we're very much aware of that. And the arborist has said that that is a concern. So, you know, until we get to that point, really. Aren't sure, you know, beyond what we've already suggested, proposed, what what we're going to do there. As far as the porch size goes, there, you know, we did submit some. Comparables in the neighborhood that some of them older, some of them fairly recently remodeled. There are, if you do look at our comparables, one on Delaware. And one on Florida that both have two by tens on their porches. And as you probably know, just due to the fact that current wood isn't as strong as the older wood was. We do have to go deeper or things like that for, you know, larger members, just to make the the kind of spans to have those open porches. Our alternative would be to use engineered wood, which I don't think anybody really would prefer at this point. I think I think that hits most, unless I just want somebody.
Okay, I think that that took care of all of the points. That I had jotted down. Commissioners, did I miss anything? Did he miss anything or any other questions that you might have for him?
Yeah, this is Robin. So the the two by tens, those are the horizontal boards that. Go in the front of the porch. I'm trying to visualize what you're talking about.
They're they're actually the rafters of the porch, so they're. Structural ceiling, yeah.
Can you make do with something smaller?
We, well, we can look at it. I haven't really run the structural engineering on it completely. You know, this is kind of the the cursory run of what we know will work. So we could end up with two by eights. That's certainly an option to go smaller and obviously a preference if we can.
And also one more, how far again is the tree from the new foundation? And in feet, do you know?
You mean like the center line of the tree?
The trunk to the to the new foundation.
It's, well, to the new foundation, it's about between five and six feet, I would say. It's it's a fairly large tree and it's it's the tree itself is. Right on the property line. I mean, it it's mostly within this property, but it it does kind of spread beyond the property line.
Yeah, it looks like the camel lever is three feet, right? So then there's probably a few more feet to the to the edge of the tree.
It's about five feet, yeah. Well, it's, no, to to the edge of the tree, it would be. Kind of counting here, it's probably about seven feet to the edge of the tree.
Okay, so three feet camel lever, then about another four feet to the edge of the tree.
Right.
I I I lost you there in the numbers a little bit. So the the center, the center of the trunk is is five feet from the built, from the new foundation.
The center of the trunk would be about between five and six feet, yeah.
The canopy, so the canopy, the tree canopy overlook?
So, yeah, it is, I mean, it, you know, the Angelman spruce, it doesn't really have such a wide canopy as much as it goes straight up, but it's, um, but, I mean, it's a good sized tree, so it does spread quite a bit. And we've, we've discussed this, um, so the, the three foot setback that we're doing was the, the recommendation of our arborist. If we start to dig down and find that the roots are much larger, we do have the capability of stepping back, I mean, we can easily do a, a five foot, uh, cantilever if we needed to.
Okay. That's a, that's a problem that can be engineered if that tree becomes, um, uh, an issue or gets in danger.
Yes.
Okay, good, 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 glad to hear that. Any other questions then for Mr. Holbrook? None? Then, um, thank you very much, Mr. Holbrook, thank you very much, Ms. Gould, for, for your input.
Uh, we did get a hand up from her again.
Okay, would you open her up then?
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Uh, hi, this is Mancy Gould again. Um, I'm unclear whether the front porch has a flat ceiling in it, or if it's vaulted. If there's beadboard, which is a traditional product that's proposed to be used on the underside of that. And then regarding the structure, the two by tens, you can have your rafter tails appear to be the scale of a two by four, even though your, your roof troughs or your roof, uh, rafter is a two by ten, there are lots of ways of accompanying that. So the, the end question is, from the scale of a building and, and to match single story dwellings that weren't built of larger materials like two story dwellings were in the neighborhood, or most of them of this type of house were not, they were built, you know, with two by fours, pretty simple. Um, and so there is a way that you cut your rafter tail smaller than two by ten, so you still have the weight and support of the larger member for your roof if you need that for engineering, but in the end, it's what you're going to see when the finished product is finished. So, um, I think it's important also to think about what is going to be seen, is there beadboard, is it just exposed rafter, is it going to be plywood? Is it going to be hardy plank board on the underside of that porch, is it a flat roof? And just thinking about those things of they, uh, you know, when you're walking by a porch, what you see at the finished product, so I, um, wasn't able to capture that from the plan, so maybe the applicant could describe that a little better.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holbrook, would you like to come back and, and respond?
Yeah, uh, just to explain, the, the goal is to have open rafters, so we are not planning on a soffited ceiling. And, and the reason being that if, if you look at the front elevation, we are bringing in a detail from the original house that was on the, the original stoop, it's a um, three part kind of sunburst element. Um, the, so the goal really is to have a finished plywood underlayment, under the roof, and then exposed rafters. So we could cut back the rafter tails themselves, but, you know, having open rafters, you would see the difference anyway, you know, just standing in front of the porch. So we thought the consistency of it would, would be better look.
Okay, alright, um, um, thank you for, for responding back, Mr. Holbrook. Any other questions from commission? Alright, then I'm going to go ahead and close the input part of this, uh, this hearing. Commissioners, are there any other? Oh, um, uh, Ms. Kennedy, would you like to make a final, um, uh, presentation?
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Very much. Um, you know, Commissioners, we can do this one, what, to, one of two ways, we can just kind of start talking about things right now, if you want to put together some thoughts, oh, I can, we can go ahead and do a, um, um, an, a, a proposal, wrong word. I, um, I can't come up with a word.
Deliberation?
We can deliberate now, or you can go ahead and make a, a motion. Anyway, and we can discuss, discuss everything through a motion, if you would like to do that. If you'd like to do some deliberation first, we can go ahead and do that. Uh, Commissioners, preferences?
Gary, this is Jim Fagerisky.
Yep.
Uh, I would be happy to make a motion, uh, to approve the application, uh, with the conditions of approval, uh, as stated by staff. But I would also like to just formalize a third condition of approval in that a certified arborist be present during the demolition of existing, uh, foundations and footings around the spruce and the construction and excavation for new footings at the, uh, in the area of the spruce.
Okay. Okay, spruce, and, uh, so your conditions were the setback, uh, from Planning Commission, from Planning Council? The, and it's, um, the arborist on site when it comes time to digging around that tree. Jim, did I get that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and then there was, what was the third one you had?
The existing, that's the standard details checklist.
The standard details checklist. Okay, and then, um, would you accept a, a, an additional condition to your, to your motion, Jim?
Uh, sure, depending upon what that is.
Depending upon this? That, that they go ahead and explore the engineering about the two by tens becoming two by eights and work with staff so that the massing of that front, uh, porch doesn't look so, so monstrous.
I would be happy to accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, could I maybe just add either, um, changing a two by ten to two by eight, or if keeping it two, two by ten, um, looking into kind of notching out or shrinking the rafter tails on a two by ten, so the, the two by four would be exposed, per public comment.
Okay, so then something, something, uh, with those two by tens, um, to study the feasibility of making them less, um, noticeable or less massive?
Right.
Would it be okay if he, if they work with, uh, with, uh, with Heidi Han, on, um, that issue? Would that be okay, Heidi?
Yes.
Okay, part, as a part of the condition of the motion, okay.
Hi, this is Jim Fagerisky again, I would be, uh, again, happy to accept that as a friendly amendment, uh, with staff, uh, reviewing the efforts and having final determination about the configuration of those rafters.
Okay, alright, so, we do have a motion on the floor to approve, okay, with the four conditions that we've spelled out. Do I hear a second? Is there? There is a second to the motion, now, discussion amongst the Commissioners, go ahead and give me, give us your, your discussion on the motion itself.
Yeah, hey, this is Jerry, this is Robin, um, I guess one more, uh, might have, um, maybe minor, uh, friendly amendment to the arborist. Uh, recommendation in motion is that the arborist also, uh, you know, file a report, uh, a signed report with, with the, with the staff.
File a report and work with staff on that, Jim, would you accept that as a friendly mo?
I would accept that.
Hey, would you accept that as a friendly amendment as well?
Yes.
Okay, other discussion then on the amendment itself?
I guess we're, we're going to leave a little discretion to the, to staff, it sounds like, on both the tree and the porch.
I'm going to go ahead and, as far as, uh, the tree goes, and, and, um, the communication between the building process and, and that tree, really. Um, yeah, Ms. Kennedy, you can go ahead and, we can put that on, on your shoulders.
Correct.
And then as far as working with the, the two by tens and kinds of things that can be done, you would also go ahead and, and watch over that as well.
Correct. I will work closely with Mr. Holbrook.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I will work closely with Mr. Holbrook.
That sounds a real good idea, and I think that was what the, um, the commission's intent was. Alright, so then, not hearing anything else, then, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
You, you, Ms. Holbrook, thank you very much, Ms. Gould, thank you very much for your, for your comments. Uh, um, very instructive, very useful, I enjoy them. Okay, alright, uh, next thing on the agenda, and I lost my copy of the agenda. Oh, here it is. Somebody, please organize me. Uh, next thing on the agenda will be a public hearing for, uh, project PZ, uh, dash two zero dash zero four one four. Okay, uh, before we get going, I can go ahead and read this preliminary statement. This is a de novo hearing and is an initial evidential hearing of PZ two zero, zero four one four, which is a request for a tear down removal, uh, remove and replace the stone retaining wall in front of the rectory and church buildings on Northwest Lava, and restore a short length of the retaining wall on Northwest Franklin Avenue. The applicant has the burden of, of proving that he or she is entitled to the approval sought. The applicable criteria for this application include the Bend Urban Area Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Three and Chapter ten point two zero, Historic Preservation Code and the Secu- Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties. Testimony and evidence at this hearing must be directed toward the criteria set forth in this staff report or other criteria in the Bend General Plan or Bend Development Code that you believe is applicable, or any other criteria in the National Register of Historic Places program that any person believes applied to this decision. Failure on the part of any person to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford the Landmarks Commissioners and parties to this procedure an opportunity to respond to the issue, issues precludes appeal to the City Council or Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Additionally, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the Landmarks Commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted in the following order, the staff will give a report. Applicant will then have an opportunity to offer testimony and evidence. Proponents of the application will then be given a chance to testify and present evidence. When all proponents have testified, opponents to the appeal will then be given a chance to testify and present evidence. After both proponents and opponents have testified, the applicants will be allowed to present rebuttal testimony, but may not present new evidence. At the Landmarks Commission's discretion, if the proponents presented new evidence on rebuttal, opponents may be recognized for a rebuttal presentation. At the conclusion of this hearing, the staff will be afforded an opportunity to make any closing remarks. The commission will, may limit the time period for presentations. Before the close of the hearing, any person has the right to request an opportunity to present additional evidence, argument, or testimony regarding the application. If the hearing is continued or the record left open, the applicant shall also be allowed at least seven days after the record is closed to all other parties to submit final written arguments, but no new evidence in support of the application. Alright, do any other Commissioners have any ex parte contacts, prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest to declare? If so, please state the nature and extent of those. Commissioners?
I do not.
None here?
No, same here, no, nothing.
Okay, and I drove down Franklin today and took a look at the wall and that part of the, of the wall that, that they're going to be working on. Okay, um, let's see, the representative for the, um, for the church, Mr. Link, are you there? Mr. Link, are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, you bet. Now, does any, any party wish to challenge any Commissioners based on ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts of interest? Hearing done, we will proceed. Um, Ms. Kennedy, go ahead and, and with your staff report, please.
Okay, um, I did see there, Will, I did see there are a couple of people there in the call in, I don't know if they are just listening in, or if they have anything to, um, to object to with the, um, any potential conflicts with this public hearing.
Okay, I'm saying for public hearing, then we'll make sure that we get, uh, in touch with those people?
Will do.
You very much.
Thank you. So, um, for the record, my name's Heidi Kennedy, I'm the staff planner for this application, PZ twenty dash zero four one four. Um, the, this application involves property at four nine four Lava Road, it's the Saint Francis of the CC Catholic Church property. And it's a request to remove and replace a large portion of the stone retaining wall in front of the rectory and church building on Lava Road and restore a short length of the retaining wall in two spots on Northwest Franklin Avenue. Um, the wall is, um, basically falling apart and, and is a danger on in the hundred ninety feet, linear feet of existing failing retaining wall. And as part of the review of this, um, application, staff, um, used the applicable criteria from the Bend Code, Chapter ten point two zero, Historic Preservation Code, and Chapter four point one from the Bend Development Code for review and procedures for handling this application. Um, on page ten of the staff report, this listed staff's recommendation to the commission was that they approve all of the rockwork as proposed in the submitted application. I do have, um, that's all I have at this point, I do have, um, the plans ready to pull up, um, in event Mr. Link would like to refer to, um, one of the drawings. And that's all I have at this point, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very, very much for the, for the staff report. Uh, Mr. Link, um, if you have a presentation that you'd like to put in front of the commission, is, it's your turn.
Yeah, thank you, uh, no, the staff report is thorough and, um, I hope that it speaks for itself at this point in time.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Link then? Our Commissioners, Ms. Commissioners, do you want to see? Um, would you like Ms. Kennedy to put some of the visuals of the wall up on your screen, so we can take a look at it, if that's possible?
I, I have it up on my computer, so I'm fine, but.
Okay.
It, it, it might be useful.
Okay. Will and, and Heidi, can, can you put it back up, and can we take a look at the wall itself and some of the photos of the?
Yeah. Uh, I was just, Mr. Link, do you have anything in particular, or if, I tried to cut and paste some pretty, um, visual, prominent visuals for the staff report, if I could pull up the staff report and then we could kind of scroll through there, if that is maybe the best, or?
That, that would be a good start, um, you had two, uh, three examples of the deterioration, um, the two of just, um, the fact that it is a public safety problem. There's a couple of pictures on page five, and those are only two examples of many along that length of wall where the stone has, um, fractured off, uh, spalled, and fallen into the sidewalk, uh, which is a continual, you know, sweep up and maintenance issue. There's also the, the fact that the wall is leaning, and there was a photo of that.
Yeah. So this is Terry, I have just one early question. It does say that some of the existing, um, capstone on the top can be salvaged. Um, are you pla- sorry, maybe I'm just misreading this, are you planning to re, I know you're not reusing most of the rock, but are you reusing any of the capstone? most of the rock, but are you reusing any of the capstone?
We are setting the capstone that which is not damaged. There's a portion of the capstone that is not damaged or, you know, is reusable. So we'll palletize that and try to reuse it in the repair work, which is on Franklin.
Okay. Got it.
And also, there's two stone walls that actually go up the stairs to the main entrance that are being that are not being replaced. They're just being restored. So we would use any capstone in that restoration.
Okay. And then related to the stone, the the black diamond stone that's no longer available, I understand you can't find that, so you can't reuse it. But all the stone that we're going to be taking down, since it is original, is there any plans to kind of store that or reuse it? And I apologize if this is just a question I don't know here in the city, but what do we do with materials like this that are original or historic? You know, can we store those somewhere and reuse them in other projects? I hate to see them end up in, you know, the dump.
And just as from a builder's perspective, I work for Sunrose Builders. If you get a really close look, I would say sixty to eighty percent, maybe even more of that stone is spalling. It's it's literally delaminating. And and we found that the capstone had some ability to be reused, but the vertical stone, if you zoom in to these photos here, it's just undisputable that it's spalling. And moisture has gotten into the stone over time and just delaminated portions. I mean, I keep using that word delaminating, but it's probably not the appropriate term, but it's kind of that same spalling is probably the most appropriate term.
Is the black diamond stone, can you estimate the age of it, or is it from the original construction, the the time of the church?
No. The historic pictures that we've provided, there's a picture from nineteen forties. Let me get to that real quick. I want to get for the.
I can try to find it.
Nineteen thirty seven, there was actually a concrete retaining wall and then only around the main entrance. And it's a little difficult to tell, but it looks like the rest, just the the grass or the slope from the rectory just came down to the street. Then we found a photo from nineteen sixty eight where it's blocked by a bunch of people, but if you zoom in, you can see that the wall is there. So somewhere between thirty seven and sixty eight, this wall was built. The other the other factor there about your question was, you know, was this original when the church was built is the foundation of the church and other walls that may have been built, and that's backed by Sizemore on the northeast corner of the property, were done in lava. And I've been in the crawl space of the rectory and there is so I'm sorry, that has nothing to do with it. The the foundation was done in lava. So, you know, it's possible that they just sourced lava that was from the construction and created the foundation, or they were sourcing it wherever lava comes from, which is all over the place. So for those reasons, that's the answer to the question is, we believe it's from nineteen thirty seven to nineteen sixty eight that that wall was built.
Okay, thank you. Do we, for those, do we have any, just I I'm not familiar with this rock specifically. Is there any other historical significance about the specific type of rock? That we know of?
About the black diamond stone?
Yeah.
No, I nothing that I can think of.
Okay. Thanks.
Some of the commissioners have been on longer than I have. Robin, anything come to mind?
No, I don't, I'm not familiar with it, but Heidi might know.
Yeah, Heidi, any?
So I just know Mr. Link saying said, which is it's locally sourced.
Okay. And if I'm assuming that you chose the chocolate sandalwood stone because that is the most similar?
That is correct. After our research with local masons and suppliers.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of questions I have that might clear up some confusion that I have in my mind. The new stone is certainly not going to be a uniform size and shape, is it?
That's correct. The staff report brings light to that, yes.
Okay, yeah. The other question that I have is I just looked at the the photo of the stone for the stairs underneath the stairs, and it has some very, very noticeable grout joints. And some of the wall that I believe you're going to leave also has very noticeable grout joints. Will you match those grout joints with the new wall? I don't think I remember seeing that.
Yes, when we tuck and point, well, going up the grand, the stairway to the main entrance, the staff report mentions that we're going to tuck and point. Those were actually done, and this is this was from a parishioner not too long ago. And so they are that roped grout joint, which we're going to match.
Yeah, that's.
Grapevine, yeah, they on the, from the photo, you're seeing the back of the wall, which is not, and we would we would make the backs of the walls roped. The stairway sides of those walls are already roped, and so tuck and point doesn't necessarily mean we're regrouting everything, but we're just finding holes or places where that roping has fallen out and repairing them. Putting in new grout in a roped format.
Okay.
So on the back, so the photo side, yeah, there it is. Thank you for showing that photo.
I've got it.
On the photo side, and I'll call that the backside with the flower side, it's not as visible, but when those got repaired, they did not do it in the roped joint. It would be our intention to take those out and do them in the roped. On the stair side, decide that, you know, you have to look to the far wall. That's already done in the roped joint, and it's my understanding that was done relatively recently. I don't know the timeline, I know it might recently, maybe the last decade. But there is some deterioration in those, and we want to tuck and point just at those deteriorations, those mouse holes, those spots that need it. There's also some loose stone, not many in these two walls that you're looking at on the screen, that we would, you know, pull out as necessary and put back in and then rope. So the answer to your question is on these two walls, when we're done, they will have the grapevine or the roped joint.
Okay, and then with the with the with the staff report and the photos, there is a photo of the church itself on the corner that shows the the walls, the brick walls. If you can, if you can boot that one up. The rock wall. And since we get it, and I'm looking at it on my phone, so so if.
One moment, I'm getting there.
I, no problem. I appreciate everything you do, Heidi. Don't rush it. These are not the most ideal of conditions, trust me. If I'm looking at the front of the church, okay, my confusion is which parts of the wall, the one going along Franklin there, is going to be brand new?
The one going along Franklin is going to be repaired.
Is going to be repaired. So then.
Restored, restored, and and that we felt was because it's a, there's a distance, it's it's away from the public sidewalk and does not have the safety issue.
Okay, so then churches, the church facing lava, and so then those walls that are on lava, the lava side of the church, are the ones you're going to replace?
Correct. Complete removal and.
Complete removal redo.
And replace, yes.
Then my concern is, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nope, you got it, with the new, complete removal and replace with the new stone, correct?
When you're done, am I going to be looking at that photo of the front of the church? And I'm going to see a similar appearance, design? And, you know, I mean, again, that's why I asked you if the the bricks or the stone was going to be a uniform size or not. How different is that replaced wall going to look from that, particularly that corner, from the one that's on Franklin?
Well, on that corner, the two types of construction will meet. The grouting, the roped grouting will will match.
The rope grouting will match, the color will not.
The stone will be different. One stone will be eighty years old or so on Franklin, while the other stone all along lava from many, 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 many feet, all the way down to the southern property line, will be the new construction. The other place where you'll have old meet new is at those corners where the lava wall turns and goes up those stairs.
Goes up the stairs, right?
Yes. So as the stone seasons, you know, I'm I'm not a stone expert, but in general, one may continue to see a bit of a difference that, you know, there's a difference in stone, but as it seasons, it may also blend in.
Yeah, well, I don't know how much more a an eighty year old wall will change in color, but I do know that the new one will change in eighty years.
Or a couple of seasons even.
Seasons, yeah, I won't be around to watch it, but anyway. Okay, so then, so then, when you're done, we could possibly have three different views of that of those continuous walls. Colorings, shape, texture, and that.
Which I would offer is currently happening. I mean, as there's lava stone, for example, scattered in the existing wall, you know, a few pieces here and there, I I find some of them look like the state of Texas and some look like Kansas.
Okay. Yeah, there's a, there's a photo V one in the files, but that's going to be the existing stuff. It has a notice of proposed development sign right behind it.
But, yeah, that's just a sign, that's just the the showing that we put up the sign, but it's a good, it's another photo of the existing wall.
Okay.
Yeah, the palletized rock looks quite similar. Yeah, Heidi's got it up now. Looks quite similar. I mean, I think in in the spirit of the rock that's there now.
Okay. So it's just gonna, it's just gonna be a uniform top capstone rather than varied. And a little deeper and deeper into this, which you want.
Yeah. You know, from the top, I'm looking at, there's a photo where we show wall is leaning. The front to back dimension is somewhat uniform on the existing wall, and so what we're installing is going to be uniform, just a little bit deeper.
Okay.
But the front view, as as I think you're trying to point out.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a look from the street, yeah.
Width is, does, the current one varies, and we just do not have a source for the sandalwood in a varying width.
Okay.
And there's no support wall behind the existing wall today, right? So that's.
We don't believe.
Okay, and and the difference here is that, like, where this rock is solid, there likely was no drainage or support wall. In the proposed wall, you'll be building it today's standards where it's the CMU, like actual retaining wall, likely with some sort of drainage and then a veneer. We're putting a rock veneer, right, versus these?
That's correct.
Okay.
We want a hundred year wall or more.
Okay. And then the existing wall, the wall that is going to be repaired, you'll go ahead and make sure that there's drainage and and all of that will be taken care of as well, so that that doesn't deteriorate anymore.
No, in order to do that properly, we'd have to demolish the wall and reinstall it, and then we're in a situation where we would basically use the same detail as the lava side. So.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Our intention at the restoration work is to only pull apart rocks that feel loose and really keep it surgical.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, why would one part of that wall deteriorate so quickly, much more quickly than another part of that wall?
And wait, are you talking about the wall on lava compared to the wall on Franklin? Or just one portion of the wall on lava compared to another portion of the wall on lava?
The one portion of the wall on, on, what would that be? Yeah, I guess that would be lava.
I would say in general, the entire wall on lava is deteriorating. I don't, I don't know that I could point to, you might find one area, maybe it's the characteristic, you know, small area that for some reason there's a mass of rocks there that aren't spalling quite as much as others, but it could be just the characteristics of the rock. But generally, that entire wall is dealing with the forces of retaining, you know, and moisture in the soil behind it, and then freeze thaw and other probably chemical reactions.
Yeah, well, eventually you're going to have to do the same thing to rest that wall, aren't you? Jim?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one more question about the capstone. Is the capstone precast concrete?
Oh, no, on lava, let's stick with lava, because there is a portion here that it's totally different, and that's what if we're talking about over by Sizemore, which Heidi is showing on the screen right now, that is a very unusual wall that we don't have any historic photos, but because it's done in lava stone and had that unusual cast in place concrete cap on it, we don't know what that wall is there for. It could have been, you parked your horses back there. I I have no idea what that wall is doing. But we, there's, where all those arrows are pointing to, for some reason, that stone is extremely loose, like somebody had pulled it out and maybe put it back in to try to repair it. It's our intention to just put, to do that repair work the same way, is to tighten that up, put it, grout it, but not, I'm sorry, to mortar it, but not to grout that, to leave it look dry stacked, just as it is. But to answer your question, this is the only place that we would put precast cap, because we feel like the reason why that's deteriorating is because water is getting in there and pushing out the mortar.
Okay.
And it it wants a cap, which it already has, it's just a very unusual, it looks like a fix that somebody tried decades ago.
Okay, so just on the short wall that's on the screen now, you'll you'll replace precast concrete cap as exists today to prevent further deterioration. But on the main wall in the front of the church, it'll have a stone capstone
Correct.
That will be lighter because it will cover the veneer and the CMU retaining.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is Jim Fugersky. I have a question too about this, the same photos we're looking at at Franklin and Sizemore. I understood you said you you're not going to grout the, you know, the wall to match the the front where the column is. I'm just, does this, I mean, this may be a question, Heidi, is this wall of significance historically? Just, why would you leave one portion of the wall otherwise in a rough condition? And the column and front half of the wall in a nicely mortared condition?
Well, zoom in, I'm sorry to interrupt Heidi, but it would be great to zoom in. That is a hodgepodge of somebody turned the corner there and started shoveling grout into that, trying to fix that loose rock.
I understand that. Sorry, I just wondering why, why you wouldn't want to take the extra care to improve the look or condition of that wall? If it's not his, you know, if it doesn't have any historic significance, and if it's something that somebody just threw together a while ago, it may not have historic significance.
And so that question sounds like to me, but so why is, we, we initially didn't want to do anything to this wall. Um, it is just to try to, uh, keep it from deteriorating more without spending a lot of money.
Okay.
That could snowball. Um, further and there was clear intention here that that's a dry stacked wall. Now, there's a photo of the other side, which is the more public side. Which is grouted and roped. Which we will, um, yeah, it's the third photo.
Yeah.
So we don't, you know, we don't have a safety concern with this wall. Um, we just don't want it to fall apart any further because we do, you know, it's a. It's a, 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 an amenity of the church. For some reason it's there. But this is the Franklin view that she's looking at there and we would tuck and point joints as needed.
In your repair of the dry stack, I mean, just looking at the tail end of that photo, there's a lot of little tiny stone. That was chinked in there. Is your intent to try and, you know, get a better fit between larger stone?
Yeah, I would say that is our intention. Um, as you, if you're out there looking at it, as you look to the left, that wall is very tight. It's for some reason, just this first ten feet. Um, is very loose, but it would be our intention to pull out loose rock and find appropriate lava stone. To put in there, uh, just mortared.
Yeah.
Would, let me ask this. If we find the funding and there's savings in the project, can we, can we get your approval now to go ahead and? Rope and go ahead and mortar that with a rope mortar?
Uh, it would be my preference as long as it doesn't violate, you know, again, I, I, I don't see this wall having. Particularly historic significance, uh, it would be nice if it matched the end of the column and the opposite side of the wall.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. Okay.
No, yeah, I wouldn't object.
Simply don't have the funding right now, but. Sometimes that changes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are you guys still there?
Uh, I, I lost audio for a bit.
Yep.
I'm Kevin's here.
Okay. Hello?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Jerry, you seem muted right now?
Hey Jerry, were you trying to speak? I just somebody did you?
I, somebody muted me. Did you mute me?
Uh, no.
Or did I hit a button I shouldn't have? Okay, so is there anybody out there who would like to speak against the proposal?
I do see one person with their hand raised from the attendee list.
Yeah, caller five four one four two zero, I'll unmute you. You'll hear a couple of beeps and you can go ahead.
Hi, this is Nunzi Gould. My husband and I built the lava. Tough house, which is down the street on lava road. And the reason lava roads called lava road is because they ran into a lot of lava. The basalt stone that is the wall along. Um, Franklin is very heavy material. If you ever picked up a, a piece of this material. It weighs about five times more than sandalwood tough stone. Tough is ash and, uh, it occurs naturally here in central Oregon and many buildings are built of tough. Um, so I understand the desire to use tough because you can go down to the stone shop and acquire it. You can go down to the stone shop and ask them to cut tough a size that matches the size that is there now. Instead of just buying what they already have palletized. So the differences here is that there's going to be a footing built. There's going to be a CMU retaining wall built and then they're going to veneer the outside of this wall. And then put a veneer on top of the CMU so you don't see the holes of the CMU. So a couple of comments I'd just like to make is number one. The stone that's shown in the staff report is random stone with random shapes. And I think this building really would benefit from keeping the block scale of what is on the lava road. Facade now of the wall, the lava, uh. The lava rock wall on lava road has a large scale. It's not randomly laid, it's block, okay? And I think that's an important basis for the much larger building, which is the Catholic Church on the hill. A couple of things, because of the irrigation and the slope of the land. That's between the height of the church floor and lava street, there always will be moisture that falls down to the newly built. Uh, wall. So dealing with that drainage, I think, is an important consideration for the next hundred years. Um, so that, uh, you don't only get the pressure of the. Backfill area of the heavy lawn that's pushing against that wall, but so that you're also dealing with the moisture. Um, I've heard the word rope when it comes to grout. And I'm not sure if that is a. Uh, describing term for a concave grout line or. A convex grout line. And those are two really important distinctions on traditional grouting in bend. So we used a con. Um. Vex, which means it's, your grout, uh, is like. A U shape sticking out from the face of the rock. Convex would be a grout line that has a U shape sticking in towards the rock. So I don't know how rope grouting relates to either of those traditional methods. Um, on the lava roadside, there is a single stone that caps the wall. It's not a concrete precast. And I'd like to see it not be a concrete precast there. But it being a single rock, whatever that width needs to be to cover the whole thing. And I'd like to see it also in the scale. In other words, we haven't really talked about what that capstone might be in terms of height. Um. Um, right now it appears as though the rock at the top of the lava wall is a pretty sizable rock. Not just a three inch cap or a four inch cap. So I'm not sure that it's been detailed further in your drawings or not. Um. The other comment I'd like to make is I think it's important for the lava street wall to coplane with the stairs to the church. Um. So the height of the wall, the retaining wall, how that blends in to the sloping walls that come down from the stairs. Um. And then regarding the base of the new sign, I don't know what material is being proposed for that. Maybe you can tease that out a little bit. Um, Ben also has a number of what are called rubble rock walls. And these can be seen around town, many different places where just whatever rock was around got used. And that's how I would describe the wall along Seismore as a rubble rock wall. They, um, weren't built with any great structural integrity. And, um, they use whatever they had and it was put up dry stacked, which means. There's no grout between the stones, but there's grout at the back of the stones. Um, so I actually differ with Jim Fergersky's comment about grouting that whole wall. That would be adding a whole new element to the existing wall that doesn't have that. And I think there's a wonderful book that call, that's called The Evolution of Buildings. And on historic buildings you can, that has been evolved over the course of time. You can see a dating progression of when things happened. And I think it's important in Ben that we honor the techniques that were used to build. When they don't need to just be scrapped or completely changed. That's part of the fabric and part of the uniqueness of these various, um, assets in our historic districts. Um. So again, there is the ability to saw in this town. Um, tough sandalwood stone. Uh, you can make it any size and just about any thickness and. Lengths that are big enough that two men can't lift. And, uh, if you want to see examples of that, uh, you just need to go down the way where we took the time and the interest. And, um. Uh, used local artisans and for CS's edification, we use Kelly Senega masonry. And he's the guy who has a wire saw and he cuts stone to order. So those are my comments. Um. I do think that when you have landscaping above a wall that doesn't deal with moisture, it's just a matter of time. That you end up with the wall sucking the moisture that you're irrigating on the uphill side of the wall. I don't think there was any discussion about what you would see. From the uphill side looking out or is there no veneer on the backside? Is the land going to be backfilled right up to the under cap of the lava wall? And so one of the things that happens when you do build is there's settling of dirt, especially in backfill. And I think it'd be really nice to, uh, kind of think about, are you going to be seeing? The to- the top side of that CMU wall when you're standing up on the rectory. So the other comment I can make regarding the basalt is the Gonzales House, uh, which is, uh. Um, part of the St. Francis campus before they sold to McMenamins. Um, that building had basalt rock and there are several others that have basalt rock. So I think it'd be really good for the landmarks commission. To be able to keep an inventory of these things so that number one, it would. Um. Uh, be a way to identify things, be a way to document things and also be a chance to look at things. Um, so the, the biggest difference between tuft and basalt is tuft can be tooled. It's a very soft stone. It can take edges, it can take. Enormous amount of detail on it and that is exemplified by the Reed School, which is built of tuft. And has wonderful details if you wanted to see what can happen on that. But in terms of matching the basalt, which is a sheer, very hard rock. You wouldn't necessarily do that to your tough stones. But where you're going to have outside corners on this new wall. Like where your lava rock wall is going to turn to the right to go up the stairs if you were going northbound on lava. You might want to think about how you're going to finish that. If it's just going to be a rough saw cut or if you're going to give it some detailing that would be. Something that would have been used had they built that wall originally of tuft. So Reed School is what nineteen fourteen, um. I haven't looked through my old pictures of St. Francis. There are some great postings that people in the community have been doing on vintage Ben Facebook. It's a great resource to see heritage pictures of town and people's private collections. Um. And, um, I think that's what I've got. But I, I think it's really important that there not be any poured concrete cap on lava. And that the capstones be large stones, not just little Mickey Mouse three inch or four inch toppers. And that they be solid stones, uh, you know. And I think the top of those are currently grouted now, right?
Okay, Mr. Link, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I was trying to keep some notes there. Um. So at the beginning, you, you talked about the fact of random stones being used. Well, we, we really were trying to do our best to match what the masons of that time were doing and. And, um, there are more pictures on file, I believe, um. Where you can see just that it's random, you know, you want to believe. Maybe the, you know, your eye is drawn to the larger rectangular, what might appear to be blocks, but. As I studied it more and more, uh, like I said, there's some stone that looks like the state of Texas and there was some stone that looks like Kansas. And so we were striving to match what the mason of the time was, was doing with the stone they had. Um. Drainage, uh, we had a civil engineer, we have, there's drawings on file. Uh, it calls for, uh, a large, uh. Uh, battery, if you will, or a. Of, 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 of a large drain rock. So first we're going to build the CMU wall and then we're using a waterproofing. Remember, uh, coating. And, um, and then we're putting in a protection board. And then large drain rock to create a, there's a word for it, but a. A retention system, if you will, that allows the water to percolate into the earth. So drainage has been engineered by the, the man stamping the, the drawings. Um, roped. In all my research of the word roped in, whether it's a slang word or not, or grapevine. Is basically, the quick answer is we're going to match. What was already there and that's that it's concave, that it sticks out, that there's a tool that's round. And the purpose of that is that the tool is consistent, but your grout line can vary. And so it's kind of their way, the masons back in the day of drawing your line, your eye to the rope. And that very consistent line, but yet they didn't have to keep their grout, uh, the stone, the joint. Distance consistent. So the quick answer is we're going to match what's already there. You can walk down there and, and see the old roping. Or grapevining, it's also called, uh, that's there. Um, the top cap, no, it's, it's not going to be precast on lava. That is going to be. Um, the sandalwood. Uh, the sandalwood is not going to be, as you say, some, uh, some chinsey three inch or four inch, um, but it is, uh, generally five inches. Um, and it will be laid on its side. So you will see that five inch. Uh, what I think is a, you know, fairly robust. Uh, cap, uh, and the current cap actually varies between four inches and six and eight. So it's not. Um, consistent. Um. And we do understand that, I want you to know that we're not going to saw cut that cap and like make these crisp ninety degree angle corners. The existing cap actually has sort of a chiseled look on the corner. So the technique is that you cut it and then you, you chisel it a little bit to give it that, uh, chiseled corner look. Um. The lava street wall will coplane and, and merge, um, and will nicely merge, I guess is a good word for it, into the. Existing walls that, that go up the stairs. that go up the stairs in height. There will be no step there or something unusual. The base of the new sign, the monument sign currently is a smattering of different kinds of stone and brick, actually, and brick that doesn't even match the brick of the church. So we wanted to bring some consistency and we're actually going to veneer the base of the monument sign in the sandalwood stone. Now, the reason why we even chose to do that is because we feel that the construction of replacing the retaining wall in front of that monument sign may undermine that sign. We may need to dismantle that sign, set it on a pallet, remove the foundation, and then build our new retaining wall up front of it, backfill, put a new base in, concrete base, same height, same look, same appearance, veneer that in the sandalwood and then put the monument sign back on. But the proximity of the monument sign may push us into actually removing it temporarily and putting it back. And that's why we chose, you know, while we're dismantling it, we should at least veneer the base of the monument sign with the sandalwood stone and it would match the retaining wall. The back of the retaining wall along lava, currently the grass flushes out with the top of the wall. So when you're standing up at the rectory, you can't see the back of the retaining wall, the rectory side of the retaining wall. And that is our intention. You won't see the CMU wall. It's our intention to flush the grass out, as is now, and match what is existing to the top of wall. The rubble rock wall at Sizemore, I agree. You know, that's why we just, we didn't want the project to snowball. We simply want to put rock back in there and mortar behind the rock so that it stays and stabilizes for years to come and not grout. So that is the plan as it stands right now. I think I addressed everything.
Yeah, I think you did, Mr. Link. There's some new information in there. Ms. Gould, is there any other comment you would like to make? Ms. Gould?
Hello?
Hello there.
So my comment regarding the type of grout that you used, you mentioned concave, like a cave. It means it goes inward versus convex, meaning it comes outward.
Yes, outward, correct.
It's convex, okay.
We're going to match, thank you for that. We're going to match what's there, what the emphasis of my comment was.
Okay. Well, I think it, you know, it's a project that needs doing and similar to other rock walls around that were built, you know, a long time ago. They don't hold up over the test of time or pressure or the banks of the Deschutes River. You know, they succumb to gravity. And I just think, I just think the scale is really important. And I understand the convenience of going down to the buying with on the shelf. I think this is an extraordinary, important building. And I think, again, it's precedent setting on what we're replacing with what when it comes down to the next issue for landmarks. You know, the next person who's going to said, but this is what you did here. So I would just really encourage you to try to go with larger stone because it's a very big building and larger stone is more suited. The difference between five inches and eight inches is huge. And so since it is available in our town and you can see examples of that just down the street where we've got some stones that are even 12 inches tall. It is, so I would just encourage the Landmarks Commission to do a drive by and look at the stone and take a tape measure out there and see what five inches looks like if you need to get that sense of scale. But the Catholic Church was the tallest building in Bend. It has a monumental presence. And what is anchoring it, if you know what I mean, on the streetscape, is the scale of the wall along Lava Road. So I just end with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for those comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Link, for, excuse me, for the presentation. Your comment of matching what is already there certainly is, certainly is one that is telling. Hang on a second. I got a frog in my throat. Okay, I think we're at the point now where, Heidi Kennedy, do you have anything else that you wish to add? Ms. Kennedy?
Not at this point, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey Jerry, this is Robin. Could I ask a question of Mr. Link?
Fire away.
Did you look at the cost of getting more varied and larger capstone rock versus what you're proposing?
Well, we did not because our studies indicated that it's not as available as they're saying. In fact, it's Kevin Spencer Masonry, or Kevin Spencer, you know, Empire Stone, Kevin Spencer Masonry, that actually harvested the sandalwood. And from what I'm hearing from the masons is they've quit harvesting that. And so already, some of the masons, we had, I think, five masons bid this, were worried that there may not be enough of that chocolate sandalwood to do the job. The chocolate sandalwood was the closest match to that darker color of the existing black diamond. So there was no stone in my research that might be seven or eight inches to price. And I also didn't take that step because only some of the stone is seven or eight inches on the existing wall. Some of the stone is five, six, it's varying.
Where does that sandalwood come from?
What I understood was it has been harvested from the Tetharo area, like the Tetharo Resort. And they use a lot of that. They don't use chocolate as much, but they use a lot of the sandalwood stone around the Tetharo Gulf and Resort area.
Thank you.
I'll look for that. Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, it looks like Ms. Gould has her hand up again.
Okay, what was that, Will?
It looks like Ms. Gould has her hand up again.
Okay, very quick comment. Gould, you have for us?
There are five colors of tuft in central Oregon. You can see boulders just stacked at people's properties because they don't even know what it is. You can see boulders out along skyline. Yes, Tetharo harvested quite a bit and they reused it. It comes in big boulders, right? You're cutting into an area that had ash, compressed ash. So the volcanic eruptions that have happened here created compressed ash. And depending on the vein that you get into, that's the color you're going to get, right? So the Railroad Depot building is pink tuft, for instance. Pink tuft is found out by Tumalo. It's found out by the Mount Bachelor Bus Barn, where the skate rink is, okay? I do encourage you to be in touch with Kelly Senega. He's a longtime mason. He has an inventory of boulders. He can wire cut whatever the size. When they show up with these boulders, right? Kevin Spencer has two or three guys working in the yard, cutting it to some predisposed size for maybe a project, maybe not a project. Maybe he's keeping his guys busy and they're out there working all day, cutting it to some size. So that's how you get to the pallets with five inches of rock, okay? Five inch rock size. But I guess if you just want to go to Home Depot and get it off the shelf, that's what you're going to get today. But if you're trying to replicate a look of a wall that is there doing the best you can, then you dig a little further. So I encourage landmarks to think about how, you know, you're not asking these guys to use the rock that's there. You could, you could say, take the rock wall down, recut the stones that are there to five inches and use those stones again. That could be a solution, okay? That's going to be a lot more expensive, okay? And a lot of added manual work. So I understand where the church is on budget saving to just say, well, we can't get that anymore. They could reuse all the stone that's there, mark it, label it, do exactly what happened with the Railroad Depot, okay? And rebuild the wall and you wouldn't necessarily know that there's a CMU behind it. So I think landmarks has to really think about the national register standards. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, would you like, would you prefer some discussion right now or would somebody like to make a motion right now?
Jerry, this is Jim Fergersky. Want to clarify my comments regarding the wall at Sizemore. You know, it is apparent there are two different construction techniques that were engaged in that wall. My real question is, which one is original? And, you know, because it's obvious that there's a difference in construction and what was the sequence in which it happened? I understand comments from the public that yes, there are different types of wall, but as a Landmarks Commission, if we're trying to honor the historic nature of the building and the loose rock wall was something that was just done expeditiously at a later time when portions of the more finely worked wall, you know, had problems. Or, I mean, what is the sequence, I guess, and what is it we want to acknowledge as significant to the building?
Okay, all right. And significant construction. And nowhere in any of the reports or anything I've heard tonight said anything about original construction or construction type of that wall. Okay, so I really don't have an answer for you unless, Mr. Link, do you have an answer for it?
I don't. Just a vague, you know, our initial thinking was that because it was a lava stone, that it was just, it might have been done when the church was built, but that there's no evidence of that that we've found.
Other comments from commission? Anything else that you want to clarify or have cleared up?
Just one last question for me, following up from some of the public comment. Given that you're adding a CMU wall and that we're just adding a veneer, did you assess, based on the current or existing rock, the ability or the percentage that could be reused, knowing that you'll be using a smaller amount of rock just as the veneer? Is there enough rock to do that?
No. It's a very significant amount of that rock that is failing and the rock itself is failing, spalling, cracking. And I, you know, delaminating is probably the most descriptive word I can come up with of what's happening with that rock.
And your decision on the rock that you're proposing to use, is that based on the church's available budget versus, you know, some sort of custom or hand cut option?
Well, this is about as custom as you can get for the quantity that we need. And, no, so to answer your question, the decision to go with this rock had nothing to do with cost. Zero, zero. We didn't ask, hey, can you show me? I mean, I knew the hurdles we were up against in the historic application that we're doing. I wanted to go out and research with the masons and the folks that cut it, including, actually, it's Senega Masonry that's going to actually do the masonry work. They're buying it from Empire because Kevin Spencer was, is the largest harvester of this kind of rock. But everybody that I talked to kept pointing towards chocolate sandalwood. Multiple people pointed towards the existing rock and said, that's black diamond.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, no other questions then or comments? Any other discussion from commission? Would anybody, oops, I'm sorry. Anybody out there?
Yep, we're here. We can hear you.
Okay, would anybody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm, as the alternate tonight, I, with quorum, I can't make, I can deliberate but not vote.
Okay, oh, we have a quorum without you, don't we?
Yeah.
One, two, three, all right. Motion? Going once, going twice?
I guess, Jerry, this is Robin. You know, what I'm going through in my head is whether to just accept the proposal, as you know, as a good faith, or applicant, do a little further consideration of something that Ms. Gould raised and maybe Jim too, and come back at the next to see if there's any other practical alternatives that are affordable and then decide. I'm not sure which way on that. My mind is going back and forth.
Well, we don't, we don't have to make the motion or make that decision tonight. We can certainly do a continuation.
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing what the other commissioners think on that.
Jim, comments on?
This is Jim Fergersky. Again, you know, in terms of the stone size, I mean, with the configuration of the wall, being a CMU wall with a five inch thick veneer, what you see from the face, you know, you're not going to know how thick that stone is from the face value, where it's really important if you want a, you know, to see a mass, is the capstone. And the capstone is what gives it weight, you know, to the wall. I guess, you know, I don't know how, and I think the applicant addressed it before, but how much of the existing capstone, which seems to be a pretty sturdy stone, could be salvaged and reused. You know, otherwise, yeah, you're not, you know, with the sandalwood chocolate welded tuft that's proposed, you know, typically, it hasn't been cut to more than a five inch thickness. But, you know, I think, you know, as far as seeing a random size on the face, you know, I know the stone. I talked with Empire about this stone before. And, you know, there are some large stones. You are going to, you are going to have good scale on the face of the stone. I think the question is whether or not the capstone is of appropriate scale at this point. I personally don't have a problem with the capstone. I would recommend, you know, that the capstone would be one point place where the applicant might spend a little bit more money to get the stone cut to a standard dimension at the backside instead of having an irregular, you know, back edge. You're just going to make your landscape, you know, a maintenance person really mad at you because it's going to be hard to mow that irregular edge and/or edge. But
Okay. Terry, um, um, yeah, I know you're the alternate, but any other additional, um, uh, comments or input on the thoughts of not making a decision tonight and, and, and asking Mr. Link to come back to us with additional information?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Um, I'm going to turn to, to Heidi, Ms. Kennedy, uh, what's the proper procedure where we're at right now? We don't seem to want to make a motion. We kind of seem to want to get some more information from Mr. Link. Uh, are we looking at a continuation of this, um, uh, hearing?
Um, that's Heidi Kennedy for the record. Yeah, I just, I feel like it's kind of, I feel, I have a sense that's on the fence at this point, and I know Mr. Link is, um, anxious to get going on this project. He has a time restriction. I wondered if there might be some way to ask him for some more feedback tonight that may, may make a decision for you to be able to condition um, the decision tonight versus waiting to, um, uh, continue or maybe just talking with Mr. Lincoln, seeing exactly what you would like to have him provide if this hearing is continued and just exactly when he could provide it for you.
Okay, um, then I'll go back to commissioners, uh, Laura and Figursky, what, what exactly, what additional information would you like to see from Mr. Link?
Well, I'd like to see if it's feasible to pop with the varied and large the focus of our discussion and, you know.
Yeah, I would agree with Robin. I mean, if there's a possibility of getting, you know, a thicker capstone, I have no problem with the face, uh, stone in terms of its scale, but I think the current, what's out there currently, it's a very thick and heavy capstone. And, uh, I think the project would benefit from something like that. I personally, if it was possible for the applicant to find out more information about the wall on Sizemore and just, uh, why were the two different approaches taken, you know, uh, on that wall?
Mr. Link, did you hear those, those concerns from the commissioners?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Can you address those tonight?
Well, and I think it was, uh, Jim, you talked to Kevin or to Empire Stone as well. It was my understanding and talking to them and, and, and all indicators are they are the expert on harvesting this stone, which is the closest match. That, that they, they are in limited supply. It's, it's my understanding that they don't have large stones sitting there at this quantity to cut in larger and varied, varied size. And Jim, I guess I would ask, did you ask that or, you know, did you get some sense of that in kitchen?
Well, conversations with Empire were more about the nature of the stone itself. Uh, when I looked at the wall, existing wall, the, you know, those, uh, capstones appeared to me to be almost closer to basalt, uh, as opposed to, you know, what the chocolate sandalwood is a, is a, what's called a welded tough. There are, you know, categories of tough and, uh, from tough, which is much softer than welded tough. So I was looking more into the durability of it. I saw the sizes you were proposed, you know, uh, I think, you know, again, the question is because of the existing, for me, and I think, uh, you know, from, um, Ms. Gold and that the question was about the cap and the dimension, not some, in much its depth, but its thickness, uh, you know, the reveal or face, uh, at the top of the wall, you know, to the public. Uh, where what's now is a much thicker appearance. And, yeah, it may be simply that that stone isn't available that way. And, you know, uh, I mean, that's really the question without going to, you know, I guess extraordinary effort, um, to get, uh, you know, you could probably get a cult, uh, a basalt cap cut in that size, but that may be, uh, you know, a heroic effort at, at this point, but, uh,
I think it, it's really the quantity that, that's, you know, causing this, I want to say the showstopper on that. If it's varied, I guess we'd need to understand, you know, what percentage of the capstone should be hundred and five inches? And what is the thickest, you know, obviously we go out and take some, some measurements of what's currently there.
Well, let me, yeah, let me clarify my timing. I think the, the, you know, as you're looking at the vertical face from, you know, the sidewalk or street side.
Yeah.
You know, as proposed would generally be probably the five inch thickness. You know, its depth extending back into the lawn, as I understand your proposal, might vary.
No, no, let's be clear about that. And I heard that. Yeah, that, and it's, I liked your landscaping comment. No, generally it's going to be 13 inches front to back.
But I appreciate that, that clarifies that a lot for me.
Okay, thank you.
So I think, yeah, the main concern then that I was hearing was basically, you know, when you're on the street or sidewalk side, the public side of that wall and you're looking at it, uh, you know, is that five inch thickness significantly different from the current stone? Which I would guess is probably anywhere closer to maybe eight inches in, in depth. And that, that's the difference. And I guess that's the question before the commission at this point. You know, is what is acceptable i- in that instance?
Okay. Robin, additional discussion?
Uh, no, um, it would be good, I mean, I'm sorry about the time deadlines, but it would be good to have a little further investigation on the availability of varied and larger capstone. And the cost of it.
Well, as a commission, you know, I mean, we have the, the authority to go ahead and continue this, this hearing.
Yeah, that's where I'm tempted to go.
And Jim, how about you?
I would be fine with that.
Continue the hearing and Terry?
Give the applicant some, uh, time to just, you know, see if there is a thicker capstone available.
And, uh, Terry?
Yeah, I guess my question related to that, maybe this is procedural as, you know, could we, could we approve a motion or set a motion and have them work with staff, uh, for that final discussion? Just, just knowing that there is kind of a time sensitivity today.
We can make the motion to reflect anything we wish. We could certainly, um, uh, Heidi Kennedy, you could certainly work with, uh, Mr. Link on that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be one option. I mean, what, maybe the condition could be tailored to require the, the larger, um, stone, um, subject to, uh, Mr. Link getting some written verification, whether or not it's available or, or really the quantity is, you know, available, something like that. You know, you could say, you know, we want this unless there's really written evidence that we can't get this.
Yeah, I, I think that would be my recommendation. Again, I'm not voting on the motion tonight, but that would be my preference.
Okay. You heard the comp, uh, Jim and Robin, you heard the compromise, um, thoughts?
I'm amenable to that. I mean, I think, you know, I would, uh, be willing to put forward a motion to approve upon the condition that the applicant bring back, uh, some additional, additional evidence to staff that demonstrates that a capstone, a thicker capstone in anywhere between six and eight inches thick is not available.
Or, or otherwise, you know, use that thicker capstone if it, if you do find it.
Yeah, or, or otherwise use the, the thicker capstone. Thank you, Robin.
Heidi, did you get all that?
I did. I think that that's a, um, a good alternative, a good compromise. And I would propose that I could work with Mr. Link and, and to, um, hopefully reach the commission's goal. And if not, that we have the evidence to prove that it's not possible.
Okay. Jim, then would you, Commissioner Figursky, would you like to make a motion then?
Uh, yes, then I would move to, uh, approve the applicant's, uh, submittal with the condition that they provide additional documentation to staff on the availability of a thicker capstone, uh, being somewhere between six and eight inches thick and, uh, staff being able to make that determination.
Good. Do I have a second?
Um, I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved a second to approve the proposal, uh, with the condition that either additional evidence comes to staff why six to eight inch capstones is not feasible. Or if that is feasible, then to go ahead and use six to eight inch, um, uh, fixed capstones.
Got it.
Questions about the motion? All those in favor, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
It'd be good to have, it'd be good to have Heidi report back to the commission on the outcome.
I would.
I can do that.
Yes, yes. And, uh, well, did we want to, um, let me ask real quick, is there a timeframe on this and, um, did, I don't know that, we already proved the motion, darn it. Do we want to set a timeframe on it? I'm sure Mr. Link is really, is really chomping at the bit to get started on this project, so I'm assuming that it will be as quick as possible.
Yeah, I would think it would be in Mr. Link's best interests to, uh,
Get that cleared up.
Get this cleared up as quickly as possible.
I am in agreement. This is Kevin.
All right. And then Heidi, you go ahead and work with, with Mr. Lincoln with Kevin about the, um, and then, and then report back to us and let us know what, um, uh, what comes about, okay?
Okay, I will do that.
All righty. Thank you kindly. Next item on, next, and thank you, Mr. Link, very much.
Yes, thank you all.
Ms. Gold, if you're still, uh, listening in, thank you very much for your comments. Uh, item number five, communications, proposed changes to rules governing how the state protects important historical places. Ms. Kennedy?
Yes, um, I included with the, uh, agenda, a link to the proposed changes from the state of Oregon. And there's 19 pages of, uh, text changes to the rules. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at that. I was wanting to take any feedback or comments that you may have as, as a commission as a whole, if you want to make a motion, if you'd like me to, to forward on any comments from the landmarks commission to the state as part of their public, um, comment process.
Okay, uh, any burning desire from other commissioners to, to, uh, testify of the, the language changes?
This is Jim Figursky. I just want to point out, you know, particularly because Drake Park was mentioned in the same and a possible conflict of interest, uh, my firm, uh, Greenworks, uh, the exhibits that were included by my firm, and my firm has been working on the, the improvements to Drake Park, uh, for some time now. So I don't know, this qualifies me for providing comments on the course proposed changes or not.
There are two items here for good of the order. Um, and the first one is, uh, text changes to the state rules, and then the, the second one is proposed changes to, um, the, uh, Drake Park.
Okay, so they were linked. My, my mistake.
So on the, Heidi, on the, on the state rules, uh, I, I, I only had time to scan it. It looked like a lot of, um, procedural kind of edits. Were there any major um, change, proposed changes in the way we would do business, I guess?
So I too felt like it was a lot of, um, procedural changes. Um, I breezed through there. I, I have given a copy to the city attorney and asked them to look at and see if they had any comments or feedback. It seems like to me, um, there are some, um, real changes. I think that there have been some high visible cases of nominations recently in the last several years in the state of Oregon, including some, um, details I don't know about, which are some sort of district up in Portland that was contentious. And then there was, I think you could say that the irrigation, the central Oregon irrigation district nominations have, have raised a lot of, um, interest. And I think some of this language is to try to help clean up the definition of ownership. And the role of public agencies that hold easements on property and to clarify the ownership status. I wonder if there were some issues on who had the right to vote on a district nomination or, you know, supported or, uh, not supported as far as ownership goes. I, I mean, I could, um, I didn't really have anything that stood out to me personally, just with breezing through it.
Would the, would the central Oregon pilot but project have been, uh, looked at differently under the new rules?
I, I wonder, because they have on page five, it talks about public agencies holding easements. I wonder, I wonder if that was, um, stemmed from some of the logistics of that nomination.
So the public agencies can now have a greater role or lesser role?
Or less, I think.
A lesser role.
Owners is defined owner of fee simple absolute. Go on. Let's see. I feel like you have to be a Lanius attorney to really kind of understand some of this. Um, but I think, um, it does not include, so on page five, it says it does not include individuals, partnerships, corporations, public agencies holding easements or less than fee interests, including households of any nature. So I think it's giving, um, public agencies that hold easements less control or less, uh, at stake.
Less say on that, huh?
Less say, yeah.
Yeah, well, that, that could have some ramifications in central Oregon. Not so much, not as much within Ben maybe, but outside, yeah.
Yeah. But I think, you know, because there was a lot of, um, very visible cases and ownership was, you know, one thing that was, um, part of the discussion. I think that this is trying to clarify that.
Okay.
This language, and it's 19 pages.
Hey, what's the time limit for, uh, public, or for input?
I think it's coming up. Um, I just got this, um, in the last couple of weeks, and I think at the end of the month or, you know, in August, they're looking for feedback and the state historic preservation office is going to look at this.
Okay, I should just go. All right. Robin, did you want to go back in and think about it and maybe come back? And, and formulate something to?
Yeah.
Or something?
If, if I, if I do, I'll let you know. Um, otherwise I can always comment individually if I decide to, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, the last day in time for, to offer comments to agencies is August 14.
All right, that's before, that's before we'll meet again.
Yeah.
Yes, so we'd have to do it individually. I haven't studied it well enough to make a comment.
And so Robin, if you, if you, if you do, if you choose to, go ahead and, and take a look at that and then send Heidi some comments or some thoughts? And?
And I can, I, I can, um, collect any comments or feedback, including from the city attorney and include that all in this public process and be clear that it's from, from the group, um, individuals within the commission.
Yeah, I would have no problem with that at all, Heidi.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, anybody else have problems with that or anything?
No, no, I, I had only scanned the proposed language changes and, uh, I would, if, what I saw, it looked like mostly housekeeping. I would, if, what I saw looked like mostly housekeeping clarifications.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. And then Drake Park?
Yep, so that's the second thing on the agenda. Uh, uh, we were asked, because the commission is a certified local government, they asked for feedback on the plans for the path along the, um, the park there. The plan is to, um, basically, hold on. So there's existing walls along Drake Park, and given the age, it's, it's, um, potentially historic, um, in nature, and the plan is, as part of the pedestrian path plan is to basically, um, hold on. To allow the, the wall to become part of that riparian planting and the, and the bank there. To leave them in place, it's not going to be a new wall, but just to let them be in there, in that area and, um, become part of the riparian planting.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
What does that mean? Does the wall get taken down or? I don't tend to come.
It's going to be, I think it's going to be partially deconstructed.
Mm-hmm, deconstructed, okay.
Yeah. Heidi?
Yes.
Would it violate rules? I mean, if you allowed, you know, again, uh, I've been a part of this project. I could explain further what is entailed with the wall.
I think that would be great. And then, um, if you could step down and if there's any feedback or guidance that you would like me to provide, maybe Ms. Shepherd can be part of the quorum.
That, that would be fine, yeah. I, I don't want to cross the line. But, uh, basically what is there now is, uh, you know, it, it's reminiscent of what was at the church.
Right.
It's a loose, uh, amalgam of rock that was mortared together in some places uh, and was covered in some places with a, a poured in place, uh, more, mortared cap, not real concrete, but mortared cap. As far as we can tell, it was never really constructed on a foundation. It was just set to the most solid earth they could find. Uh, then many portions of the wall have failed. Uh, there is in many places an existing trail up against the, the rock wall. Uh, and that, as the, what happens, you know, with our water regime is as the levels of water in Mir Pond rise and fall, water seeps through the rocks and erodes the landscape and trail behind. The proposal is to basically deconstruct rock walls in place, lay them back at, uh, you know, a four to one, you know, a, a varying pitch, a more natural angle of repose, and then, uh, re, uh, reinstate riparian plantings and, uh, you know, habitat in the form of, uh, you know, downed logs, et cetera, to create a more natural edge in many of the places where new walk is not proposed to come back up to the water's edge.
So, so Jim, the new walk would be a little further into the park, existing park?
I don't know if you're looking at the drawings now that are part of, uh, Heidi, do you want to bring those up? Pretty much, uh, sheet one starts there at Galveston. Uh, that's pretty much, the rock wall there will be laid back and more of a riparian edge. Uh, you know, a, a rock and vegetation edge there. As you go to the next sheet going north, uh, again, that, that treatment continues. In some places, the edge has gone altogether already. Uh, and again, that would just be enhanced with the riparian vegetation. So as you move further north, there you can see there's an existing path. Uh, again, uh, in many places, the rock wall is being uh, repurposed. You can see the blue line there. It's being sort of, uh, I don't, uh, it will be, it won't have a, a, uh, poured in place mortar cap. It'll be a loose rock configuration, uh, intermingled with vegetation. I think that continues to the, uh, I guess now we're headed east. And you can see the extensive, what is being called repurposed wall and then existing wall. And then as you move along in a couple of places, uh, there will be raised, there will be boardwalk that, uh, is along the water's edge. I think, I don't know, there should be additional sheets moving. Yeah, basically, at, at these sheets, it becomes a trail, and then when you get across, uh, you know, uh, I guess that's, that's Portland, you're looking at, uh, again, more of, uh, you know, laying the wall back, and in some places, the wall will stay and it'll just be trail.
Will there be any, any fill in the river or in the pond?
Uh, there isn't, you know, um, let's see, when you talk to the Corps, uh, yeah, there's, there is a, there will have to be a net zero. Uh, rock will be moved around. The, the Corps considers that fill, whether it's positive or negative, uh, although they don't acknowledge anything, they don't acknowledge negative fill, but they still call it fill if you're, if you're removing material. The idea is because, uh, it is that there's a, a net zero balance. There's no change in volumes.
Okay, so there'd be a little bit of fill, but there'd also be a removal, okay?
So Heidi, the letter from, um, the Corps talks about an adverse effect, notification of adverse effect. Um, it's unclear, reading the letter, what specifically the details of their concern is.
I think that the age of the wall, they were concerned that it may be qualified for being historic, designated on the national register, potentially.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And I assume it's really not feasible to restore the wall, maybe you wouldn't want to.
Yeah, I'm not sure at this point. I mean, that, that brings up a different question, uh, whether or not the Corps would allow a, a wall to be constructed, or, you know, uh, again, you would have to go in and to, to have it be a viable wall, uh, you would have to put it on a, some sort of foundation or footing. Uh, because it apparently doesn't have one.
Yeah, it's, it feels hard here. I'm not sure I have enough information to, to comment, um, you know, without some sort of further view of the wall or more details of the proposal. I guess I'm not sure what, exactly what the action is requested.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Are they, well, are they looking for support from the Landmarks Commission?
I think that there, it says, "Our office is inviting the Landmarks Commission and appropriate representatives to provide their views on resolving adverse effects of the undertaking to ensure the public views are considered." I think that, um, I think that the adverse effect for the eligible served property hand stacked rock wall with the Drake Park. So I think that the plan is to, to, um, deconstruct, but leave the wall, the rocks there in the place where, you know, it's basically falling apart. And so, um, I think that they're looking for any kinds of, uh, concerns or guidance that the commission may have. Um, I think that in situations like this where, where you have features that are basically falling apart, de-composing, perhaps maybe recommending that the, um, the state historic preservation office works with the Parks District to provide some sort of, um, documentation of the wall before it, you know, before the work is done. And perhaps doing some, some, um, you know, uh, documentation through some stories there in the park where they're, they're, the park, Drake Park has a, a lot of history and, um, uh, um, information that's provided at different locations around the park. Maybe, maybe that might be a suggestion. Also, I did want to know that there's somebody that has their hand raised from the attendee list as well.
Heidi, uh, this is Jim again. Uh, I may, may offer a past project that may give some perspective on that. It's similar to this. Uh, I worked on the visitor's center at Mount Rainier National Park. Uh, and the, the, the existing parking lot and some of the facilities up there were constructed by the National Park Service during what is generally considered, uh, they call it the period of sixty-six, uh, when a significant amount of park work was done around the nation. And the historic registry, uh, required that that, that the work of sixty-six done had to be acknowledged in any new work. Uh, it happened to be at this particular site a, a rock wall that was at the base of a slope. Now, everyone agreed, including the National Park Service historians, that it was a really bad design. But we had to acknowledge it in some form or fashion. Uh, and what was done was we kept the general line of the, the wall, but ended up reconstructing in a, a, a fashion that complemented the new visitor's center. Uh, and it was more acknowledging the line of what had been there prior than actually restoring or trying to reconstruct something that the Park Service considered bad and dangerous.
Heidi, do you know if the, uh, Parks Department, the Ben Park and Rec Department, has some type of an impact statement? That we could get ahold of?
Um, I do not know. Um, I asked for additional information and then he did provide me those drawings to try to figure out just where the wall basically is falling apart and would be, um, laid back down to, you know, is, let the, you know, rocks continue to disintegrate, basically, or not disintegrate, but, you know, fall apart in the same spot, existing spot. So, um, he said the rocks will be used to armor the bank and help with the establishment of riparian plantings. So, um, that's, I asked him for additional information, this is what he provided. Um,
Yes, it seems like since, this isn't something we vote on, but we're, we're asked for feedback. And I feel like, I really like the recommendation of, you know, fully documenting the existing wall ahead of time and that, you know, generally our statement would be, every effort should be used to preserve, you know, all existing materials, you know, where meeting eligible safety criteria, you know, and where new materials need to be introduced, they need to, of course, match, you know, fit form and function, um, to preserve all historic meaning, you know, so, so, something like that. Some statement of us saying, you know, ever, in our feedback is that, you know, every effort should be made to preserve whatever existing materials can be preserved.
So, okay.
Jim, will there be a section where the, the, the old wall will be left intact?
At the very, uh, let's see, I guess downstream end near Portland Avenue, there's a stretch there between Newport and Portland, uh, basically, uh, I guess downriver from the substation, uh, to Portland Avenue. That area of wall, uh, is in pretty good shape. And I don't believe there is any plan at this point in time to do anything with that section of wall. Uh, you know, it looks like it was constructed at a much more contemporary date than their portions of the, you know, what is considered the wall the, in the upstream reaches of, uh, Mir Pond and the river.
I guess to me, the, you know, the Heidi's suggestion on documentation photographs, and, you know, maybe a mention of that wall staying there, that, that section staying there, although it sounds it's a different age. You know, maybe fine environmentally, from an environmental perspective, that's not our realm, but the proposal sounds better than what's there now, but I think they're just asking, you know, is there a strong historical value to deny the, deny the?
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
Heidi?
Yes.
Is, just a general, I mean, this letter, they say there's a potential adverse effect, but the wall currently doesn't have historic designation. The adverse effect would be to any future designation?
I believe so, yes. Mm-hmm. I know what I've been, with the research that I was able to do, I mean, there are designated sites within the park, um, and monuments and such, but I don't know that, I didn't see anything, I could not find anything that the wall itself was designated.
Okay. All right. So, so if it's not, okay, it's not a designated, um, landmark, historical landmark?
I could not find any records of that.
Okay.
It potentially could qualify, of course, um, for probably many reasons. Um, so that's probably why they were asking for any feedback or opinions.
Mm-hmm. So it's the, if they go ahead and do, the Corps of Engineers go ahead and does the project, then would it still be eligible? Designation?
I don't know. I'm guessing no.
I would say no as well.
I'm guessing what happens a lot of situations that, uh, places are, um, um, potential, um, nomination areas, you know, become removed, there is documentation, and maybe it's a plaque or monuments and, um, additional information on it, but so we, you don't lose that past history information, that knowledge.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um, again, Ben Park and Rec doesn't, um, doesn't plan anything like that or?
I don't know. I think if, I think that they're just asking for feedback at this point, and I would recommend that we, um, do as, um, Ms. Shepherd said, which is to, you know, document all the existing walls as much as possible and minimize any,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, work and, and, you know, materials to match and, um, perhaps put in, uh, a monument or, um, a kiosk, you know, top documenting the, what's going on there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I'd also like to see if there's still somebody, I don't know if you want to entertain more feedback from the audience, but there is an attendee that has their hand raised.
Oh.
As well, once, once we're done, once you're done deliberating.
Okay, um, uh, I, I, I like, uh, what, um, uh, Terry put forth in that, um, the idea of putting a letter together for, uh, to put all that in, on one sheet of paper at the same place at the same time. Um, would you want to do that, Heidi, or would you?
Yes, that'd be fine. I can do that. I'll take any kind of feedback. If you make a motion, I could put that in the letter and pass it on to the Parks District.
Okay. So then do, do, do I hear a motion then? I would entertain one.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we do that.
And Terry, could you go ahead and, and flesh out some of the things that you, uh, put forth earlier? And send that to Heidi?
Sure, yep.
Okay. Yeah, just send an email. Yeah, give her some more things to work with. All right, so we've got a motion to go ahead and, and send a letter to Parks and Rec, right? Give her some more things to work with. All right. So we've got a motion to go ahead and, and send a letter to Parks and Rec, right?
Correct. And the State Historic Preservation Office.
And State Historic Preservation Office to, to be aware of some conditions that, and concerns that we have for the, for the project. Okay?
Okay.
Do I have, did I get a second?
Jerry, I'm gonna have to abstain because of my involvement on the project. So this may be where Terry steps in.
Yeah, sure. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Live.
I'm just gonna say before you want to do that, I didn't know if you wanted to entertain any motions from the audience at all.
Oh, oh, we had a hand up, didn't we?
Right.
Okay, can we go ahead and feedback from folks listening in?
Yep, you're unneeded now. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Nancy Gould. Regarding the first item under Communications, Proposed Language Changes, I'd just like to make note that there is a video meeting in two days on that topic and it might behoove a commission to listen in on that, to hear from comments around the state since it sounded as though not everybody on the commission had read the new language changes. I do think there is a movement going on now where politics and urban development is pushing out historic preservation. And to the extent that a new position is added into the language of your lead oversight official being able to quash things without having to disclose, disclose conflicts of interest or bias, I think that is not a good direction for historic preservation. I think it's really important that the Landmarks Commission, the CLG, which still has standing a notification, that the CLG is bringing the expertise. That's why the city council or, you know, city manager have this commission is to bring expertise and awareness. And to the extent that the lead city or county official can quash things, I think is not necessarily upholding historic preservation. So I'd really encourage you guys to listen on July twenty-third. It's, the information on that meeting is linked in that discussion item, Proposed Language Changes. Regarding the Drake Park conditions, I'm unclear as to which trees may remain within Drake Park as, as part of this redevelopment trail system. Maybe Jim can speak to that, or maybe there's some additional maps that are not highlighted here that would show which trees are planned to be removed. There is a really, there are two, obviously the ponderosa pines are really significant. And often when they get taken out, they're being replaced with deciduous trees, which is not the same and doesn't get us years growing our native trees. So I think a preferential treatment needs to be done to preserve our ponder, existing, you know, old growth ponderosas within the park. There is a black willow that is behind the music area that is an old tree. It's a unique tree. It's very hidden by the newer bandstand thing that got developed there, which is unfortunate, but that's another significant tree that I think deserves preservation. And the fruit-bearing cherry tree that I think was part of the McKay home, which got moved out of Drake Park. You may know it as a breakfast place called the Kay Cottage. That's where that home got relocated. I think that cherry tree is an important tree. And then obviously the trees that have been identified as heritage trees within the city of Bend, those are important trees. So I can't really tell from the maps that are part of your plan as to what trees, if any, are gonna stay or not go. But I think that's an important thing. Now, if the rock wall is gonna be removed or abolished or junked, it might be an opportunity to get the same rock that you're looking for for the Catholic Church. Are you there?
Yep, we're here. Okay.
Okay, so not all the rock wall is basalt, some portions of it are. I don't know, Jim, if you guys had looked at that possibility or had like connected the dots there. I know some of it is in bad shape and I know some areas had been already kind of parched in with, with a lot of rock, you know, as kind of a temporary fix, especially over by where the new parking lots plan to go, where the Cascade Festival of, or the School of Music Building used to be, the original Ben Park and Rec headquarters that was now demolished. So I am kind of mindful about what the ask is. The ask is because assets identified older than fifty years, which would include trees and the wall and heritage, you know, are being asked under your purview to give input on. So I would encourage you to think about your role again as landmarks commissioners as preserving the heritage in our community. And one last thing, a lot of work was done to generate photographs of the float from the water pageant. You may recall that work. I know Heidi's on the Historical Society Board and the Museum Board, so she's familiar with that work. But substantial numbers of pictures showing the various floats are at the museum as part of public records and they do show in their backdrop an amazing amount of the rock wall area in Mirror Pond. So I'd encourage you guys to, to look into the archives to understand and understand the setting that Mirror Pond was created within. And one last thing, in nineteen seventy-six, when Ben Park and Rec became a taxing voting district with elected board members, the objective was to bring natural vegetation to Drake Park. That's what they were wanting to do and to plant vegetation to bring wildlife back to the park. So it's like, it didn't take us very long to kind of get back around to that desire, you know, in year twenty-twenty from seventy-six. So I know that Park and Rec is also trying to deal with ADA for boating accesses for those with disabilities. They're trying to, to facilitate that, you know, people able to get into watercraft who may not be able to walk there or may have, you know, loading challenges or need assistance in getting to their boat. So I don't know if that type of infrastructure is being proposed in this plan. So I don't know, Heidi, if you received more drawings from the state or if you're just being copied in on this meeting just to a couple drawings that have been put forward under the existing conditions versus proposed conditions. So the, the current maps that Jim went through that show the purple and then the blue, that relates just to the wall, but there's kind of a whole nother part of it, which is the rest of what the plan is for the, for Drake Park. So it's a very special area. And it has heritage within our community for sure. I can also share with you that there are native artifacts that have been found along the river in various excavations. And so whoever deals with archaeology in your board, you might want to consult with them also.
Okay.
All right, thanks. I don't know if, was, is Paul Clayson still with you guys as an ex-officio or something? So who takes on that role?
As an archaeologist? Yeah, we don't, we don't seem to have anyone with that type of expertise that Paul had.
Okay.
Would it be possible?
Well, you guys, you guys might want to consult with Ward Tomfelt, who is a former Ben Landmarks Commissioner and also a former SHPO, sat on the board of SHPO. He lives in the neighborhood and has a lot of, he's not currently a licensed archaeologist consultant, but he's done a lot of consulting in central Oregon and might be able to give you guys some additional, you know, insights for your comments.
Mm-hmm. Heidi, again, when do, when does that, when does the period end?
I think it's getting posted as well. And I, I have something to propose if the school is done. Are you? Talking?
Nancy?
The other comment I can make is if you look at the historic pictures from the pilot viewed in, looking out the dining room, there are mature ponderosa trees on the left, if you were looking at the Sisters Mountains. And those, I believe, are being represented on your map, L zero point zero five on a Mirror Pond Bank Trail Improvement drawing. It's the lot that's currently being built on at the corner of Newport Avenue and the river. And there are two, there are actually two trees on that property. They're not located according to this map. So I'd encourage you to do an inventory of those. I have been trying to take progression pictures or capture progression pictures because they are stately and the building permit for that building in the city of Bend is supposed to be preserving those two trees. I don't know if they are on the private property or on the parks or not, whoever the landowner is there, if it's the river, if it's Taylor or I don't know who owns Mirror Pond at that location. But I haven't done a survey to where those trees actually sit. But those are examples of things that we can trace, like heritage trees. Those are important things. They're, you know, they're over two hundred and fifty years old. So that's a pretty substantial chunk of time way beyond any of us that will live. So I think stewarding resources in the park and having the park identify ahead of time what it plans to cut or what it doesn't plan to cut, I think is important. And then obviously, you know, if you can't save something, then the idea is you take pictures, you document it, you message it, and then you stick it in the file cabinet somewhere and everybody forgets about it. Ideally, that's not the preservation that we're really wanting. We're wanting, you know, to preserve what we can realistically to our best abilities. So maybe Jim has some input on which trees are planned to, to go as a result of this. I was asked that recently at a neighborhood board meeting and I didn't have plans to be able to show to anybody.
Heidi, if I may, the district has full construction documents, including a full tree survey and a tree removal plan that identi, and the tree survey identifies all trees, you know, and their size and where they are located and whether they are scheduled for removal. That actually falls under the purview of the Planning Commission as part of the Wetland Overlay Zone. And they have looked at it and the removal of a couple of large pines at the area near, near Newport are under discussion, I believe, at this point among the Planning Commission, the district and the consultants.
So encourage, some kind of encouragement to, to preserve and save as many of the trees as we possibly can, I'm sure is a given.
Yeah, the Planning Commission made that fairly clear in the laws. The district has heard it from the public. I can save, you know, again, because I am part of the firm of Greenworks and I, I have looked at the drawings that, and I have verified some of the tree species for staff that are working on the project. You know, that there, there are full sets of drawings that explain both in section and profile what's happening to the edge of the water and also explains in detail what was currently proposed in terms of tree removal and what is being, I don't, the Planning Commission should have a record of what is being discussed in terms of additional care being required of the consultant and the district.
Okay.
Thank you. Great. So when on the plan that says repurpose wall, a repurpose wall means a new wall, correct?
What I heard from the, the development manager for the Parks and Rec Districts is they are not removing the rocks that make up the wall for the site, simply laying them back to create a riverbank. I'm, I'm reading verbatim his email to me. The rocks will be used to armor the bank and help with and plantings. There, and then he has another email to me and he says, there is no new wall, only a new riverbank with rip, with riparian zone from the land to the water's edge. So my recommendation would be that I, you, direct staff to work with Ms. Shepherd where we could, what they've asked us with their letter is to address the rock wall plans to lay the rocks into, and become part of that river's edge, not create a new wall. And I think that perhaps if Ms. Shepherd and I can work on this together, we can give feedback to the Parks District and be clear that they've only asked us for comments on the wall, but we think the commission thinks that the park itself in its entirety with the trees are equally as important and, you know, and to, if they're going to document it, to work with the, the museum to get those pictures and maybe put together a kiosk and as a possibility, as a recommendation for mitigation for the wall and to be really careful and, and, and address the trees with the, the planning commission and realize that they are as equally as important as the wall.
Okay.
Can I just ask one more question? What is gonna happen to the rock wall that is there now? Does it get left? Does it get leaned over by a backhoe? Does it get deconstructed and then put in the river as just natural rock? Does it get completely removed? What happens to the existing wall that is there now where there are areas that say in light blue, repurposed wall that would be on the riverside of the existing wall?
So the, the district manager said, we are not removing the rocks that make up the wall from the site, simply laying them back to create a riverbank. The rocks will be used to armor the base.
They are, they're deconstructing the wall to lay it back. If the thing's mortared or even crumbling mortar, if they're gonna lay it back, they're gonna get a machinery in there and push it back. So your existing wall is no longer gonna be anything similar to what it is today, correct?
I don't know. This is not my project. I don't know.
Thanks.
All I can.
I, I, hmm, I think those, those concerns could be certainly incorporated into anything that the commission sends along to the district or to SHPO. Terry, are you amenable to working with Heidi on this?
Yes, absolutely. And certainly thank Lindsay for her feedback and comments and we'll take that into consideration.
Absolutely. Very good. Okay, so then we've got, we've got a motion that puts all of that together. You know, and that, and so, thank you for the, for the advice on that, Heidi. That turned out to be far more complicated than I thought it was going to be. Anyway. So we got that. Anything else for the good of the order, people?
No.
No, no, no. Well, then, these proceedings are closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your time this evening. I know it's been a really long meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, doll. Have a good night.
Good night. Good night.